Are our external partners to host educational conversations with the community. Because the reality is this racial covenants are a part of a bigger conversation, not just in Stearns County, but in our country, in the world essentially. And so, the goal is to partner with people like the city of St. Cloud, which MAP for Prejudice has already made contact with and things like that. And like maybe even St. Cloud and NWA CP and other organizations and schools in order to have these community conversations to educate people about these things and provide a space to discuss racial covenants and discharge it and its significance and things of that nature.
And then, something to add is that I've been at the county for a long time. And I went to a Recorder's Conference and they discussed this Mapping for Prejudice project. And I wanted to do something about that in Stearns, knowing that there were these covenants located in Stearns County. But right now, Anoka, Hennepin, Ramsey, Washington, Dakota and Olmsted already signed a resolution and MOU. Carver and Sherburne County are in discussions. And then Benton County is reviewing information with Mapping Prejudice.
Mr. Chair, what's the timeframe that you think this is gonna take?
Well, we have over a million records, so it's gonna take a while for them to... I mean, they're gonna have to read the properties. I mean, we're reviewing the Stearns County-owned properties and we didn't get very far because it's... You're having to look at every document that's recorded against that tract of land. So, it's time-consuming.
And the community outreach part of it will be ongoing.
Commissioner Notch, I just want to follow up to the point too, that Stearns County staff won't be researching, you know, these millions of documents. That's what the volunteer partners are for. And that's largely what the memorandum and resolution do is allow access to our records so other people can seek this out. And then it's really Reed's job to record those documents, just like any other document that comes through.
You know, sometimes letting a sleeping dog lie is almost better. Because now I... What I see potentially happening, this is a good thing, don't get me wrong, but are people gonna look back and say, "Okay, who put these covenants in this land back in the day?" I... You know, sometimes, I don't know why it became an issue or got brought up. And obviously, it's the larger counties again, you know, doing it, but I don't know. I hope it doesn't create issues.
I would like to think it would be a positive action for those property owners who are concerned about it.
Right. Well, yeah, the current ones. But it's people who look back and say, "Oh, I didn't know so-and-so did..."
Yeah, and I could be wrong, but a lot of these are really gonna be in St. Cloud and it would be developments, right? So like the area we lived in, it became a development. Hillside was a development. So, it is probably a couple, or if not more, generations ago of the developers working with the folks. And it's... It is, like I said, I was surprised and a little shocked and then a little dismayed when I saw ours. And I know, Lee, you've got some south of you. Yours, your addition was newer, so you might not actually even have it there. So there's an opportunity actually for some education and probably some reconciliation. I mean, just individuals are thinking there's at least something you can do. I mean, the place we live in now was built in 85, so there wasn't anything like that by then, the laws. So it could be a fairly, hopefully, a fairly limited time and in largely one area and partnering with the city makes a lot of sense. Yeah, these are challenging things to talk about. Well, I'm gonna make the motion to approve this, recognizing this is challenging and believing that it's the community partners that'll be doing a lot of the outreach. And I was also wondering who'd be doing the training for the attorneys, the volunteer attorneys.
Again, that's largely a mapping prejudice. And am I missing a partner?
Just.
Just. So again, these are volunteer local partners that would handle that. And again, largely, the resolution and memorandum just systematically allow the Recorder's Office to deal with this.
And Mr. Chair members, I... There's a lot of issues I don't necessarily hear about. I actually do hear about this one. I've been approached by people being interested in being volunteers, wanting to figure out how to deal with their deed. And I know it's come up with the city of St. Cloud, with the NAACP, with Unite Cloud, with Create Community, with the partners that are up there. There are a number of folks that are really interested in engaging in some way.
And I also think, I also think that this will go a long way and with, I guess showcasing Stearns County to the community as a genuine partner when it comes to, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. And so, I have, I believe that we can only get something positive out of this long-term.
Okay, we got a motion. We're looking for a second. I've got a question. I understand the general concept, but I don't quite specifically understand how this is going to take place. And that's what I'm curious about. So for example, Centennial area, which is an area that developed in the 60s and 70s, and all those folks now have a deed on their property. And if there was language that was considered inappropriate, how do we go about... Is, are we gonna be changing each one of those deeds?
No.
No.
Okay, so then what are we going to be doing?
The discharge is just adding to the chain of title. It's just basically saying that I do not agree with the racial language contained in my deed. It doesn't, we can't remove anything in our office, but it's just like a mortgage. You take a mortgage out and you pay your mortgage off. We record a satisfaction of mortgage stating that the mortgage is released. So that's kinda what this is doing. It's releasing that racial language from my deed.
Okay. And will that then take place every time a new piece of property is, or property is exchanged? Or will be added to every piece?
It'll just, it'll be whoever, the property owner. It would be the property owner that signs that discharge. Somebody else cannot sign on behalf of the property owner.
It's 100% property owner-driven. If they don't bring it to us, there's no action for the county.
Correct. And once it's recorded once, then that chain of title is done.
Okay. Do you folks all understand that?
Yeah, when you buy a property, what happens? You come into the Recorder's and these folks look at that title and they catch it at that time.
That's what I, that's what I'm... If it's gonna happen in that way, that makes all the sense.
Yeah, that's, you know, for us to go through every damn title and look for this stuff, you know, no, that's not how it works.
And Mr. Chair, I would agree with that, but that's not what they're proposing. It would be homeowners that would be coming forward. It might be at a time of a sale. It might be at some other time.
But Mr. Chairman, that might be right. But then you gotta react to it. Before Chad said, "No, we're not gonna do this," right before that, Jody said that you were doing that. We spent a fair amount of time identifying the Stearns County records. So it's, we're kinda getting two different things here. And first of all, we don't have a second, so...
Well, I just, I was just trying to do it during the conversation, so... And I thought you were talking specifically about properties we own, not about anybody else's properties.
Yep. Our office is researching, I think there was like 135 county-owned properties. We're researching the county property. If we find one, we will be contacting our county attorney and they will assist with recording that discharge.
So, Mr. Chairman, there is county time involved. There is action going on by county employees. And there will have to be, once a property owner does identify and wants to change it, you'll have to be involved to change it. So there is county, it's not, there's no, there is county staff involved. So what Commissioner Landsweiler is saying is right. Do it at the time if that's what they wanna do, but that's not what this is about. This is going back. So again, there's no second for the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is that, what's the, is there a law regarding this? Even if there is?
Yes.
Yeah, well, we have to do it then. What's the argument?
I just need a second.
Why don't I understand here? I think you're, I think we're considering a rather obvious situation here. Does this really take board action?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I would hope it would.
The board action is to waive the recording fee.
Yeah.
And allow access to our records, the colleges, to do the research. And then volunteer attorneys would draft the document and submit it to us, and then we would record it at no charge.
Because from the Recorder's Office, a discharge of racial covenants is no different than mortgage satisfaction, a plat or any other recorded document.
Mr. Chair, it's just, you're waiving the fee, $46 recording fee.
Yeah, there's really two things that you're doing. One is you're agreeing to cooperate with the entities that are gonna do that research and allow them to do that research, and then waive the recording fees when those do happen.
And Mr. Chair members, I wasn't planning on making like any kind of a speech today. So I, and if you need more time to think about this, that is fine. We do have a significant, there's kind of two, there's probably more than two things to think about, but we have a significant part of our population, of our members who, whose ancestors would have been directly impacted by these. This is symbolic. There is not a way to remove it, but it allows people to at least say, "We don't do this anymore." And then there's also the broader opportunity for property owners to make a decision about their own titles, you know? Kinda back to your point, Steve. The truth is, I could look and see, I know who did mine, because I could see it when you're, when you're looking at yours. I don't, I don't know that I held it against them. I just didn't want somebody else to think that we were doing this. So this is, this is something the city is engaged with, and we are the ones that hold the records. That's the reason why it's in front of us.
Well, Mr. Chair, but like in your case, is this something, you could've come to the county Recorder's Office and...
No, there was nothing. This will, would permit, yeah, we don't have...
Well, is this a, I mean, was this a state? How did this come about that now, and it's okay?
Well, it's, the state permitted that change.
There was a state law change allowing this to happen if counties chose to adopt a resolution like we brought today.
In 2019 is when that law was for the discharge.
And I also wanted to say that like, and so far, 60, about 66 or 67 properties in Stearns County have been identified to have a racial covenant on.
And that was by St. John's, St. Ben's. That was a project they worked on for a semester.
Okay, I, again, I gotta, I wanna get a pragmatic approach about what we're doing because I still don't quite have it. Are we gonna do this now with all the properties that the county has? However, the private properties, we will not do them. We'll only make that correction when they come up to be changed, the titles will be changed?
Correct. Our staff will only be searching Stearns County property records. Mapping for Prejudice will search all the other properties. And then, then we'll only record, if we find one on Stearns County property, that's when I'll contact the county attorney and they'll draft that discharge. And then we'll record it against the Stearns County-owned property.
Okay. I guess what I'm also concerned about is this discriminatory language that's there, that's also part of our history. And we need, that should not be taken away. That needs to be evident that that took place. Okay? When the Supreme, when the Supreme Court ruled in 48 that that was no longer legal and the state in 53, didn't that just negate the ability or the valid, the validity of that action?
Yes.
Yes, again, making it largely a symbolic gesture that property owners may choose to take.
Okay.
Yes, as a property owner, if they're reviewing their land, historical land records and they see that, they might not particularly care for all that language. So then this discharge, they can act discharging that racial covenants from their land records and removing it from the chain of title.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, I guess the word that kinda gets me is mapping, which usually that means you're gonna lay out what this is gonna look like or potentially where these occurred.
Yes. And that will get, that they'll give to us.
Okay.
And then that's where Cortez will be involved with sending flyers out to people and we'll meet and say, "Well, these are the areas. If you want to discharge," then they'll have volunteer attorneys to help assist with that.
And they've already started mapping it, by the way. You know, they've already started, that's what mapping prejudice does.
So they're mapping in Stearns County even though we didn't approve it?
Well, they, it was through St. John's, St. Ben's. They received a grant to do this for their school project. So now they're requesting if they could have access to our records for free to map them all out. And I think they're gonna continue to do this through the colleges and their, St. Ben's, St. John's have been working with SESU.
Because of course, all the documents in the Stearns County Recorder's Office are open to the public. Anybody can currently research them. This just takes it to, it would make it more accessible to those volunteer groups who wish to research these.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm wondering, yeah, so I think that there is, and I'm not, I'm trying to decide if I should withdraw my motion and we come back after we've had some more time for people to understand. I think there's some confusion about what this really is or who's doing the work. And maybe that's part of what we need more information about. And Mr. Chair, I think you were saying you're having trouble wrapping your head around it.
I'm confused about understanding how the process is actually taking place because I see that document being there, the comments were made and we had these racial covenants in there. And we should, we should account that, yeah, in our day and age, we don't support those. We think that, you know, that was wrongdoing when they did them. But the Supreme Court and the state already removed that, so to me...
They made it unlawful.
Right.
Correct. Okay, but that would then negate those covenants.
Correct.
Okay.
Thus, it being a symbolic gesture for the property owners who wish to go and take that extra step to explicitly say, "This is all I feel about that language."
Yeah.
Okay.
It just empowers the property owners to remove it.
For example, Commissioner, I was gonna say, for example, Commissioner Clark, you know, she didn't want that language on her deed. And so, you know, I just want you to imagine other property owners who do not want that sort of thing on their deed, who would like to actually discharge it.
So, Mr. Chair, in our case, it wouldn't have been when we actually got the house, because I don't even think we noticed it in the title. I feel kinda bad about that, that we didn't notice it. We went to go sell it. We absolutely did. As a seller, we saw a longer list of things. We would've, at that time, I don't know if we would've, because we wouldn't have thought about it during the time, but if, when we went to go sell it, we would've discharged it.
So, Mr. Chair, it does sound like, you know, there's some questions here. I mean, can, obviously, we do it under review and push it to another meeting.
Yeah, I think that would make sense. So I'm gonna withdraw my motion for right now, if we could, maybe people get a chance, because it sounds like you've got more questions, too.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, now that we're this far into it, it's not gonna matter to me if you push it forward or not. I'm still learning this agenda stuff, how in the world this gets on the agenda when we've got so many other things that are so important and waiving fees and things like that. There's a lot of residents out there that are paying a lot of fees and a lot of other things that, you know, I don't, I'm not clear why this is before us at all. But two questions now that just came up. One, so is the county gonna do this no matter what we decide? You said the county's starting to do it or we're start... So are you gonna do this for the county properties no matter what? No matter what we do?
St. John's, St. Ben's had already done some research, the county. We have been researching the Stearns County property, but Mapping for Prejudice hasn't started because they want access to the documents for free.
And Mr. Chairman, I guess that's the question, is why are you researching them? Who directed you to research them? Or why is this, who's bringing this as an issue?
Commissioner Bertram, as Director of Property Services, Rita brought this to me. And so ultimately, it is my decision to direct staff when they come to me with things they want to do. And I wholeheartedly approved them spending time to research Stearns County properties to identify any that had racial language in them, with the thought and in my heart of thinking these were not positive reflections on Stearns County. We are agents of the board. We can take whatever direction the board wishes to go today. If, we can certainly stop that today. We certainly have other things we can do. I would look for this body to direct us if that's not how we should be spending our time.
And the other question was, so if someone like Commissioner Clark wants to do that, make that change, can they do it themselves at their own cost and their own recording fee?
They certainly can.
So they can do it anyway?
We couldn't before, though. I just wanna be clear.
But you can now without the county involvement. So again, you can push it forward, but I can't believe we're wasting 20, well, yeah, more than that.
I'm just trying to allow for people to record the document at no charge.
Well, and again, Mr. Chairman, my bigger concern with, it was wrong. I have three properties. I'm one of those anal guys that went all the way back on my abstracts and everything else. I didn't ever see nothing like this, but what happened, happened. Who originally, my great-grandfather on the Century Farm that did it, that's what happened. And a lot of things happened in 1930. And, but that's history, that's what happened. And so on all three properties, the abstract's the abstract. And if you really feel strongly about it and you wanna do it, then do it. That's what I wanted to know. You have the freedom to do that. But I can't believe that we're wasting board time or staff time on something that doesn't seem to be a problem, which is what Commissioner Notch said earlier. So I think we should move on.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, I, there's a part of me that wholeheartedly agrees with what you just said. There's another part of me that realizes we've got a lot of challenges for people, constituents, for residents, for citizens who live in our county, for whom, at a bare minimum, this is affront and offensive that this language is out there. There's many people that are unaware of it. And this is part of, you know, learning about at least this community, maybe not the whole county, but this community's history and affording an opportunity for people in our county to be able to essentially be making a stand and saying, "This is wrong. It's still in my documents. I wanna discharge it." And it's a pretty, and a fair amount of the people are paying some pretty hefty property taxes as it is that are helping people in other parts of our county. So in some ways, if you wanna think about it from a dollar and cent standpoint, it's actually a pretty small thing, given what the impact is, given what that language that you just heard from, from Rita, it's pretty hard stuff.
Couple of questions. First of all, are there any properties that we know of that still would have been processed after 48 or 53 that would've had that language put in them?
I believe when St. John's, St. Ben's, when they did research, they found some in the 80s.
Okay. Now, by all means, I believe those, those should be corrected. However, my mind is telling me those that sunset are sunset. And so that the document really doesn't need to be corrected because then we're trying to change history because they have sunsetted. But if there are any active, then I think we have an obligation to close those off. Now, that's my mindset. Okay?
I guess I...
But we're gonna, we're gonna all digest this.
You're perfectly correct legally. This is something that a number of other organizations and other people are interested in removing, or at least, it actually doesn't get removed, it gets discharged. It's, as Rita explained, it's like a mortgage. The language will stay in that sequence of events, but it's, it doesn't change anything legally. It gets it out of the document because there's a lot of people that would like to be able to make those types of statements.
Well, now, Dr. Williams, well, couldn't we just make that a policy that whenever a property gets updated, that happens?
That would not be a county decision to make.
But we would be recording it, wouldn't we?
We record whatever property owners ask us to. We don't motivate what they bring in to be recorded.
So it's, it's private property owner that's recording a document. They look at it to make sure it's legal, but they're not gonna say, "By the way, you should go do this." And I would not recommend that. You don't want them to take time researching a document at that point.
Mr. Chair, I think what I heard you say is that, I could be wrong. You're, I thought you might've been asking that if at the time there's a prop, the property is transferred, that the owner wants to discharge it, then you could see doing it at that point. And I don't know if you're saying waiving the fee, because that's what we're really talking about. But at that time, not necessarily at another time. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
You're needing to think, it sounds like.
Yeah, well, I am. So now I'm getting a little bit, maybe better picture of what we're trying to do here. So it's, we're just gonna be mapping these and it's only gonna be up to those homeowners that would like to go ahead and take this discharge upon themselves to have that. And it'll just be an added piece, and that'll actually then go on the abstract.
Yes.
And it'll be, it'll be in the page that, because they're in numer, chronological order, that it'll be from the date, whatever date they file it. So then when the piece of property then is exchanged, that, oh, okay, okay, I have no trouble with that.
And Mr. Chair, I think Commissioner...
You wouldn't be mad at somebody else.
I think Commissioner Bertram really summed up this pretty succinctly by recognizing this, what we've brought today as a memorandum and a resolution is 100% about waiving fees for these. Has nothing to do with private property owners' ability to move forward to discharge those racial covenants and pay that fee on their own. So by not taking action today, you're not limiting private property owners' ability to deal with this. The fee schedule would remain as is. And so if this, if the board does not want to waive fees, you aren't taking away anybody's right to do that discharge.
And Mr. Chairman, that sums it up. People can do it. And they can pay the $46 to do it. And they can do it. If it means something, if it means that much to somebody, they're gonna pay the $46 and do it.
So then, Mr. Chair, so then if I hear this correctly, this could be moved, but with the exception that we won't waive the fee. Is that kinda what I'm hearing?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I hear it differently. I hear it that we don't even have to talk about this now for 45 minutes.
The horse is dead. Does it make a difference to the access to the records?
Yes.
So we need to move it for the access to the records.
Yeah, you could do that.
Yes.
So we could allow them access to the records.
Okay.
Yep.
Which are already public.
Correct. There are fees for accessing the digital system. So the memorandum of understanding would waive fees for research partners at the universities. So you could pass the memorandum and leave the resolution, which would mean the recording fee is still in place for private property owners, but the memorandum would waive the research fee or the access fee for the colleges and universities to research them. That's the distinction between the two documents.
And Mr. Chairman, there's people that are asking for public data all the time and we make them pay for that access on a whole host of things. Again, this can all be done already in different ways by paying the fees. We're not restricting anybody from anything. And we charge the fees. We charge the fees for everything. Somebody comes in and wants information, elections or anything else, we make them pay for some of that. Some of that we provide. Again, it's a non-issue in my mind, and I think we've, I hate to repeat Commissioner Landsweiler's, but I think the horse is dead.
God.
Well, Mr. Chair, basically, it's a symbolic gesture.
Yes.
It's what it is, on behalf of the county.
Congratulations, you're a hero.
We appreciate your time today.
Okay, right. And, but by all means, I wanna make it clear that this board stands that those people that wanna make that change have the right and should go forward and make that change.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I would like you to, if you're... Mr. Chair, I would like you to, if you're okay with it, I would like to get information about what the cost of waiving the fee for the colleges and universities would be.
We can certainly follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right, thank you. Okay. That was supposed to take 15 minutes. We went a little bit longer. Okay. Jody, we're on to public works.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jody Tyke, County Engineer. My first item, Item D1, begins on your packet, Page 69. Today, I'm asking the board to adopt an updated bridge priority resolution. The last time the board updated the bridge priority resolution was in July of 2022. This resolution is typically updated about once a year. Every once in a while, we have an exception where I might come with a second update during the year because of a bridge condition. Adopting this resolution does not obligate the county or the townships that are listed in here to replace these on demand, but rather including them in the resolution makes these bridges and structures eligible for the use of state bridge bonding funds or state town bridge funds or special town bridge funds. The resolution is on Page 70. You'll see a list of several bridges through the year 2028. And again, this gets updated on a regular basis as necessary and is generally based on our most recent bridge inspection cycle. I know I did reach out to Commissioner Notch and Commissioner Bertram about the bridge on County Road 14, and I'll cover that a little bit more under my miscellaneous items, but that's a recent finding as well, although it shows a local planning index of 62 and generally you need to be below 60 to be eligible for bridge funding. That will be updated after a recent inspection on that bridge.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to the resolution.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second on the resolution. And Jody, I'm just going to comment. I hope that those townships are taking advantage of this because it's a great opportunity. So, you know, we want to make sure.
Usually they do jump on it and as those local planning index numbers drop, when we send them their annual maintenance letter, we will indicate when that structure is eligible for town bridge funding. And most townships are very responsive to that and then I can walk them through the process and work with them.
Yep. Sometimes they need that help and we appreciate you giving them that help. So I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
My next item, Item D2, is on Page 73 of your agenda packets. I'm asking the board to approve the award of the contract for SP 073-070-029. And these are traffic signal modifications on 20 signals throughout Stearns County. Most are in the greater St. Cloud area. One is in Coal Spring. You'll see on Page 74 that our bids, bid came in significantly higher than estimate, 83% overestimate, to be exact. Just a little bit of background, we applied for this funding on signals that needed rewiring and they needed new controllers, new cameras, very much maintenance things. But as part of that, we are upgrading some pedestrian safety features, whether that be the pedestrian indicators on these traffic signals, the push buttons. We're doing some ADA improvements at the ramps at these signals. So because of that, we get to use federal safety money. So MINDOT is still looking to see if there is additional federal safety money. We have about $685,000 in federal safety money allocated to this. They're looking for additional federal safety money and I have not gotten an update on that. I apologize. However, as a side note, we had planned initially to use our traffic signal budget to cover the local share on this. But when we awarded the County Road 4 and 133 roundabout, MINDOT gave us an additional, I want to say about $535,000 in federal money that we were planning to use state aid to cover. So that $535,000 can be shifted to this project since we did not need to use it on the roundabout with that additional federal money. The other thing is this project will take course or take place into next year so we can use some of next year's budget money as well. Looking at the numbers, I did talk with the contractor extensively, reached out to the two bidders for the subcontracted work to verify what he did tell me. I don't believe that rejecting all bids and re-advertising will yield better bid numbers, unfortunately. We, I looked at the cost of some of those traffic signal components and how much they'd gone up in the last six months since this estimate was prepared. So I do recommend awarding this contract. This will result in a lot of traffic signal work upgrades to, like I said, the wiring, the controllers, things that need to be done anyway in working with our electricians and our facilities. This is their recommended list. So I am recommending award.
Mr. Chairman. Jody, I trust you inherently, but this really scares me. I mean, normal, normally of what I've seen in my short time on the board and obviously paying attention, whenever estimates would come in this much higher, they were rebid or they were delayed, $685,000 additional, you know, above and beyond what the estimate was, where that's a lot of roads and a lot of districts that are in sore need. And I don't care if it's state money, federal money, our money. God, I just think if we wait at least maybe a year and everything can wait, you know, there might be another bidder, there might be a number of issues, but I, you know, respectfully, I disagree. I really do think we should not award the bid because this is, I've never seen nothing like this that far over. As you said, you didn't either. I just think we can wait. Firstly, and I won't support the resolution.
So, Mr. Chair, if I can ask, Jody, when was the engineer's estimate done?
The engineer's estimate was developed at the beginning of this year. There were a few modifications that were added to this and the estimate may not have been updated accordingly. One example is we have a traffic signal in Sartell where we added a separate pedestrian indicator pole because of the line of sights with the ramps and everything. And I don't know if our technician updated the estimate on this at that point.
And, Mr. Chair, it seems like, and I could be wrong, but it seems like Design Electric is the main traffic signal bidder, I think, as long as I can remember.
In the area, yes, they are. They do a lot of work for us. We've got a great working relationship with them, which indicated by the fact that when I contacted him and he went through this bid with me in detail and gave me the names of who he got quotes from for the subcontracted work. And some of those unit prices were exceptionally high because in our mind, it could still be done with equipment, but the grading contractors were like, no, this is handwork. It's minor grading work to get in those pedestrian ramps at the appropriate grades at each intersection.
You need a resolution on this, the bottom line.
A motion.
Motion. I'll make that motion. I got contacted on this and this is a goofy situation.
And I'll second that with a question.
Okay, I got a motion and second to approve this traffic signal modifications. Go ahead.
Is part of that then the ADA accessibility ramps? Is that what you're talking about?
Correct, correct. I would say about 75% of these intersections need concrete work done at the ramps to make sure the ramps are at the proper grade. We've got landing areas. We've got the truncated domes faced directionally so that, we were in our mind, when we started with this, with MINDOT state aided, their federal aid, we were thinking we could just do the signal modifications and then the ramps. And that work got added in. And it is very minor work at, like I said, probably about 15 of the 20 intersections.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Jody, I've got another question. Boy, that's, that's a tough one to swallow, but is there any chance of modifying the request? Or we've got, we're looking at 20 intersections. Do they all have to be done or?
So I did ask that question of MINDOT's federal aid, just saying, I understand it would modify the scope of work and so therefore our environmental document and our application. And they respond, did not respond directly with a yes or no, but they rather said, we will look for additional federal money for you.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, are there currently ADA ramps at these locations?
There are ramps. There are not ADA compliant ramps.
But there are ramps there.
And in some cases, yes. Some of them don't have ramps at all. Some have ramps that are very steep, varying degrees.
And, Mr. Chairman, again, I think if we wait, I think we could make a better investment of these dollars and $685,000 would certainly do a lot of work on bridges and roads and then just regroup in six months, take a run at it again and see if something changes. That would be my suggestion.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add one comment. The $685,000 that we got in federal money can only be used on this project. If we don't do this contract, then we would have to give that back. But the other funding, the traffic signal budget, that of course gets used toward traffic signals in smaller quantities, obviously. And then the additional state aid, as Commissioner Bertram pointed out, that could be used elsewhere.
Go ahead. Can I ask you a question?
Thanks, Steve.
Well, I was just gonna, I guess, make the comment based off of Jody's experience. You know, we could delay this and say, update the engineer's estimate, which might come in at 1.1 or 1.2, if I'm reading this right. You know, so we, we could delay it and basically say, update the engineer's estimate, you know, if that's going to say the numbers get closer, but.
And Jody, can we, can we delay that and still qualify for the funding?
Generally, you need to advertise for bids within a certain amount of, certain number of days of authorization. And so we could, we would wait and have no work done this year, this calendar year. We could advertise, you know, in a couple of months, open bids later. Again, with no guarantees, they might come in lower, it might come in higher. I, obviously, I have no guarantees on that.
And, Mr. Chair, my opinion is all that's going to happen is the engineer's estimate's going to come in higher and.
Yep.
So it's really, I guess, there's a big difference there, but in my opinion, that's the only thing that's probably going to change besides the bid might be higher. I really, we know what wages are doing, we know what cost of materials are. I just can't see this going down.
On its face, it seems unreasonable. You look into it, it makes sense. It's, once in a while, that happens. I'd like to call a question.
I can't now. He just called the question. Let's vote. I'll ask you later.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of supporting the bids on the estimate, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Bertram?
Good job, Randy. No.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Notch?
Aye.
Commissioner Persky?
Aye.
Pass the score along.
Mr. Chair? My question to you, which I can get from you later, is I'm a pretty visual person. It'd be great to either see a list or, I don't know where these are, so it was a little hard to make part of the comment that I agreed with, certainly with what, what was said right before we voted.
I will email a map. I apologize for that. Thanks. Item D3 is found on Page 75 of your agenda packets. I know that there has been a lot of discussion both at the legislature and amongst this board on speed study requests that we've had. I will be reaching out to those residents who, or cities who've asked for some of these speed studies, but I did just want to give a very brief overview for some of you. And I included several of the letters in your packet. And since the agenda packets went out late Friday, I did get one more speed study that I'll quickly update you on. I'll start with County Road 1 that runs along the Mississippi River between County Road 20, 120, excuse me, near Walmart and the Sauk Rapids Bridge. Of course, residents along that road wanted that 40 mile an hour speed limit lowered. They went out, they did a speed study, they looked at the crash data and their recommendation on that one, you'll notice a common theme here, is for it to remain at 40 miles an hour until such time as we may be doing some reconstruction work along there or something else significantly changes. But they did do the speed checks and they are recommending that that remain at 40 miles an hour. County Road 2, I know there's been a lot of discussion. This is in Coal Spring. It goes right by the Recorey Schools. It's a very wide section of County Road 2, wide shoulders, middle left turn lane. Initially, their recommendation was to raise that from 40 to 45. After some discussion with MINDOT and their traffic engineers, we got them to hold off on recommending raising that to 45. We did commit to looking at doing some traffic calming measures, potentially some pedestrian accommodations, whether that be the flashing pedestrian signs, some median islands, so pedestrian refuge areas along there for those that do want to cross the street. And we'll continue those discussions. I am planning to reach out this month still to the school district. I believe the new superintendent should have started by now and I certainly wanted the new superintendent involved in that discussion. And I figured he would not want to start that on his first day of work. So I did want to give him a couple of days. County Road 47 and 136 are in St. Augusta. If you travel south out of St. Cloud on Highway 15, it's that first signal south of the I-94 interchange. County Road 47 goes to the west, 136 goes to the east. There are a couple of developments that street, whose streets access our county roads. They are right now a rural statutory 55 miles an hour. And the recommendation on both of those is that they remain at the rural statutory 55 miles an hour. The last one that came in last Friday was near the Rice Bridge. Several of you probably recall that we redid, we did a lot of intersection realignments. We corrected some sag vertical curves and cut down some hills in that area. And so, of course, we wanted to wait till that was done to have that speed study done while, because they need to have it while traffic is on there. So the speed study started about one mile south of County Road 5, which is near Frederick's Garage at the intersection of County Road 1 and 5, just east of St. Stephen. And it continues along County Road 1 all the way up to the Mississippi River at the Rice Bridge. And that one, again, we probably improved the driving experience there by cutting down some of those hills, filling in the sag vertical curves and realigning some of those intersections. So that one is also recommended to stay at a statutory 55 miles an hour. In all of these cases, the roads are rural in nature with decent access control. I won't say it's perfect access control, but it is decent. And they look at the last five years crash history on all of these. Again, I'll be reaching out to the property owners who specifically reached out on these, but I don't know if the board has any questions or comments for me on that.
Questions on, on those studies? Commissioner Bertram?
Mr. Chairman, Jody, as you know, as you said, we have no control of this. I've probably been involved in 20, 25 speed studies in my life as a state legislator and now county commissioner. It's unfortunate. I've never seen them lowered and sometimes, oftentimes they're raised, which the system is kind of broken, in my opinion, and yet there's nothing we can do about it. And if there is, I sure would like to know what it is because the St. Augusta one, the community, you know, again, they know the community better than, or as well as the highway department or certainly better than the state. And then the Coal Spring one in a school zone, it goes down to 20 mile an hour when the school's in session. And, you know, there's a lot of other issues involved that you and I know what that is and then that's unfortunate, but major residential development on the, on the left, on the east and then the school in the west. And then with the brewing company traffic coming through the truck traffic. I mean, again, and to even suggest to increase it was, is really alienating a lot of residents. So I hope we can come to terms with the school district, the city, the county and the state. But there's got to be something that we can change on the speed study protocol that it doesn't, this doesn't keep happening because it's occurred over 25 years from my experience.
Commissioner Bertram, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, if I may, we have had some roads where it has gone down. We've had, and again, we work pretty closely with our traffic staff and explain the situation, explain what the locals want on it. Again, we look at crash history. One example is our County Road 137. It goes over Highway 15 in between Second Avenue and White Park and West St. Germain and St. Cloud. It goes by Bethlehem Lutheran Church, if you're aware of that. That was 45 miles an hour all the way to the four-way stop on the West Termoni. And we were able, in that case, and again, I'm sorry it wasn't on these, but in that case, we were able to convince, and it took some work on our part, certainly, but to get them to at least lower a portion of that where the road is very narrow, you have accesses pretty frequently along that first section, we were able to get that lowered down to 35. Initially, their stance was we needed to, if we were going to do that, it needed to go further into the 30 mile an hour zone. And again, with some work, and I've certainly worked with the state on these as well. And again, with some work, and I've certainly worked with the state on these as well. But sometimes they do get lowered, is what I wanted to, I guess that's the point I'm trying to make.
And Mr. Chairman, one out of 10, one out of 50, I mean, certainly a minority of the requests. And again, it isn't your deal, or, you know, it is what it is. But they always reference crashes and they always reference the average speed. Well, then, my response to them on those comments were, so people need to die before you're gonna look at reducing the, and then plus, if you want to go by average speed, I-94 should be 100. Because I'm driving 75, the sheriff didn't hear that, and they, they're passing. So if you're gonna go based on, and again, not you, but if they're gonna base their criteria on crashes, deaths, and speed, again, it's not your deal, and I, I just hope that one day, somebody can come to their senses and just take some other factors in, I think. It is what it is. We can't do anything about it.
So, under Ms. Ladys, if there are no more questions on that, I did want to make the board aware. As I mentioned earlier, I reached out to both Commissioner Knott and Commissioner Bertram, knowing how close their districts are to this area, or they both about this area. County Road 14 over the Sauk River, we have a bridge. It's about two and a half miles east of Spring Hill, just under a mile west of County Road 12, in the heart of ag country. We did, we used MINDOT's Snoopa Truck to do a very in-depth investigation and inspection of that bridge. And then we hired a consultant to do a structural analysis on it because of what we found with that Snoopa Truck inspection. I am expecting that by the end of the day tomorrow, that that bridge will be load posted at 26 tons for a single unit truck and legal weight for anything longer. I'm sure the timing is not great, and you will likely get some calls on that. But I did share a picture with the two commissioners where we have 100% section loss in one of our girders. It's certainly still safe for what will be posted at, but we're gonna be reaching out to local media. And I just wanted to make you all aware of it in case you start getting phone calls on that. And MINDOT is working with us to make sure that gets eligible for replacement very soon. If anybody wants an update on construction, very quickly. Second street south, our County Road 75, which runs by Costco from Highway 15 over to Cooper Avenue. So they finished up paving those outside lanes. They're gonna be doing some seeding and striping this week, which is ground and striping, so it lasts longer. And then they will be doing the traffic switch to those middle lanes. And then they will begin the curb and gutter repair and the manhole reconstructions before they can do that resurfacing. We do think that access is gonna be much improved once we move to the middle, because you'll be able to access all those businesses along the outside lanes of the roadway. So we're hoping that's gonna help be a little less impact to those businesses.
And final completion?
It's, we're gonna be looking at October, by the time they get all the paving done, all the striping, everything's fully open. So we knew it was gonna be a slow process, but it's actually going to be quicker, given that they're doing a lot of their paving work at night, so. And we did open the County Road 4 and 133 roundabout last week, and County Road 72 has finally opened up as well. We finally got that bridge and the guardrail and everything done. County Road 72 is up in the northwest corner of the county. And then County Road 4 and 133 is just a few miles northwest of St. Cloud. So, that's all I have. I'm sorry that took so long. If you have anything else for me?
Last mile's out at 5:00. Yeah, they're happy to have that open up in, in all directions. Just a real quick question. The County Road 1, from my memory, you know, we've got that looking to be improved. Is that bridge gonna be, have to be replaced if we go to four lanes there?
Replaced or widened if we go to four lanes. There will be, in early October, another public open house, looking, talking about the options. And for those who aren't aware, this is County Road 1 that runs along the river between the Sauk Rapids Bridge and County Road 120. We're in the process of a study through the St. Cloud APO right now. So they're looking at several options along there and trying to evaluate what best meets the goals. If we are going to do multimodal accommodations on that roadway, which there has been a relatively big demand for, it would be difficult to fit four lanes and any sort of trail on that. But until we know what the final preferred alternate is, then we would do a more in-depth structural analysis on that structure.
Okay.
And then just one other thing. I did attend a meeting on the overpass in Freeport on County Road 11. So the Senate Bonding Committee met out there last week. So they drove over, and then we walked back across. So, you know, of course, they had a tractor come with a digger, and the bus had to stop on the overpass, because that's what happens. Somebody's gotta back up, because it's not wide enough. So that overpass, I was told, is only 28-foot roadway. And the proposal is to make it 40 feet, but it's a, it's a steep overpass. So it's very blind. You can't see if you're, you know, wanting to go over. So there's a lot of, a lot of discussions, because they're requesting $5 million in state bonding funds to help. Because MINDOT's bid, or cost is 3 million, I think.
If I could add to that, so MINDOT originally proposed to just widen the bridge, but keep it at the same grade. So it would still go over, and, excuse me, and get that minimum height over the interstate. But City of Freeport is proposing to lower I-94 in that area, so that bridge can be flattened a little bit to give you a little bit better sight distance on the bridge.
Okay.
Thanks, Jody.
Thanks, Jody.
Thank you.
Well, I believe we have a, a break scheduled on this, on the agenda. Are we gonna take that break? Lee?
Oh, I, it's up to you guys.
If I can, Mr. Chair, how about we run through a couple of administrative items, then take a break?
All right, let's do that. We'll go administration and then we'll see, take the break then.
Yeah, I think we can come up with something in administration to exaggerate the importance of the matter.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. There's several items under administration. The first is, is the use of ARPA funds of $150,000 for another soil and water conservation district clean water project. We funded the soil and water conservation district at this time last year for the same program. And I'm sure that Mark LaFave is here to tell you a little bit of how that project is going and what is intended with the next project.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Aye.
I'm Mark LaFave, a conservation planner, the planning team lead for Soil and Water District. Yeah, last year, we used, it'd be similar to last year. We're currently applying for some clean water funds through the state. Those are competitive, that we would use for match for these. We've got seven potential feedlot runoff projects, sort of in the hopper, ready to go. We would also use possibly USDA environmental quality incentive program funding to leverage those funds as well. So it's, these projects continue to get more expensive and more competitive through the various funding sources that we're, we're trying to utilize. So any additional funds that we could get from the county would be very helpful to get some into the landowners, solve some of these problems, these resource concerns, so. I don't know if you had any other questions on that?
Other questions about it?
I've got a question. It's actually for Dr. Williams. When the last one was brought up, it was kind of qualified with that this would have a significant impact on water quality because of the Mississippi. And there were other projects requested at that time that didn't come forward. So could you just talk a little bit about how these projects meet with that definition?
Commissioner Clark, Mr. Chair, yeah, we, we actually haven't, you know, we, as we made recommendations for ARP dollars in the past, we had a, kind of an internal committee that would review, review requests and, and bring those forward. This one came, we haven't had one of those committee meetings as of late. This one came in in a little bit of a rush, I would say, Mark.
Yeah.
In a request. It's in the same area, and so I'm assuming that, and Mark can explain this better, but that it, that is, again, gonna reduce the impact on the Mississippi River, which is a source of drinking water for, for some downstream. You're gonna, in, in the, in the budget process, you're gonna see that there's some recommended use of ARP dollars. There'll still be a significant amount, 3.6, I would have to look, $3.7 million remaining if you fund this and, and what's recommended in the proposed budget. Did I answer your question, Commissioner Clark?
Yes, you did, actually. And, Mark, I mean, this is obviously not a large request, given what you're gonna try to go after, so it's partially us showing that we have skin in the game, basically.
Yes, we, we really have become quite good, I think, at leveraging other funds. And, and that's really what helps a lot. It is in the Mississippi River Sartell watershed, which does not have any one watershed, one plan, process started yet. So we don't have access to those kinds of funds to help with these projects. So this $150,000 would really help to leverage other funding sources.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, a second. Motion and a second to approve that.
With the question. It, it used to be, remind me, this, this is certainly, projects are needed. I mean, no doubt about it. 25% match from the producer. I looked over the list years ago, and I couldn't believe how expensive some of these projects really are. I mean, unbelievable. And I knew the farmers that were doing it, and I thought, my God, I mean, I don't think anybody understands. And some of that is sometimes we're our own worst enemy. When we do grants and we do these cost sharing, then projects go from a, you know, 50, 100, $200,000 to a half a million in a heartbeat. But there's no, what I've always found unfortunate is you could do a project like this, and the producer could utilize it for five years and quit, and there's no payback or there's, you know, there's no minimum requirement. I never understood that. I mean, shouldn't we at least say, okay, we're gonna do this project, but you need to at least be in production for 10 years? And if you're not, then that 25% goes up? Because then we spend a half a million, three quarters of a million dollar on doing the projects, and then we have a closure of manure pits. And then we spend money closing the three quarter of a million broad dollar project that we just did five years ago. That's the disconnect. These projects are needed, but there should be some onus that they put on the producer that, okay, we're gonna do this, 25% certainly is a, you know, some skin in the game. But the closure part of that, if they stop producing, can we do something about that?
So, yes, we, these, most of these practices have at least a 10-year, if not 15-year lifespan. And they are required to be used for that, but we can't force them to continue to raise livestock, so to speak, in that facility. But they can't close it for the lifespan of, of the project. So I know that doesn't quite get at what you're totally saying, but.
And, Mr. Chairman, you know, certainly we can't force them to be producing.
Yeah.
But we could say, some, you could say, if you're not gonna utilize it, the cost share increases, in my opinion. Because again, you're, you're not able to do a lot of other projects that are sorely needed, you know, because of that. And so, think about that. If there's a way to do that, of saying, you can't force them to be producing, but you could say, it's a 25% match unless you, you know, if you don't utilize the facility for more than five years or whatever, there's a higher percentage or something, that you could go back. Because, again, it's not a punishment, but it's, again, I don't think most people understand that we're spending three quarters of a million dollar on a project. And then you're right, they don't have to utilize it, but then after 10 years, they come in, and then that's tens of thousands of dollars to fill in the hole that we spent three quarters of a million developing. That's the part, and again, it's, it's nobody's fault, but it is a reality. And I would like to have some follow-up on that, if you don't mind, just some thought to that, and with Dennis and some other folks' thoughts behind that.
Sure, I can.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I can comment on that a little bit. I mean, either we're using state contracts, and I don't know how we would be able to change some of the wording in there to include that type of thing, or USDA contracts that, I've never seen that. And that would be a, a heavy lift, probably, to get USDA to change those, those contracting terms. But it's not to say that we can't bring that up. That's a good point.
And, Mr. Chairman, the point would be it's county money. So we maybe can't control that part, but we could control our part, I would think.
Sure.
Just look into that, if you don't mind, and share something.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I was gonna say, one of the things I've noticed in my career is, you know, and it's unfortunate is, you know, farmers try and do the right thing, and in circumstances, it could be a death or it could be financially, things occur that take away, you know, their ability to maybe maintain livestock on these operations. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but I, I know I requested this a number of years ago. There, there really isn't much funding available to close lagoon, or earthen lagoon-type manure storage.
That's correct. They, they typically score very low because of the resource concern is not very evident. It's more of a safety thing, and the landowner doesn't want it there anymore. You know, maybe their grandkids are, you know, it may be a safety issue, but. So we have funded them with at least a little bit, maybe, you know, 50% or something. But yes, typically, they don't, unless they're doing a, a closure with another project or something, then it may score higher.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm confused. Commissioner Knott said there isn't money used, and you just said that there is money used. Which one is it?
There is money that can be used, but it, it.
I'm talking about, is it used?
Is it used? Yes.
Because I saw the spreadsheet. I know it's used. And again, that's nobody's fault, but Commissioner Knott, it is being used.
Right, but it's per unit, though, it's fairly small.
Yes.
It's being used, but not, if the project's three quarter million dollars, they might only get $10,000 to try and close it.
That's probably in the right ballpark, yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, if we, again, I'm not faulting anybody, they buy equipment, they do a lot of things, and something happens, and then they have to, you know, they have to get rid of the milking equipment or whatever. That, that, there's a lot more beyond it, but this is public money. And so that's why it's more of a sensitivity. And if you used, if you had some kind of sliding scale, you wouldn't need the $150,000, because you'd be making it up on projects that you've designed that aren't being used. And again, it's a, it's a dog chasing its tail. It's nobody's fault, but it's a reality. And again, how do we address that? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I can bring that to Dennis and maybe to the Minnesota Association of Conservation Districts as well, and see if there can be a resolution or something, address that.
Mr. Chairman, old Spring Hill farmers like Dennis has, have a way of coming up with innovative ways of doing things, so.
Okay. All right, we have a, a motion in a second on using $150,000 of the ARPA funds for clean water projects. I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item, we're moving on to, we're can't, we're going to talk about cannabis.
We are.
The Doobie Brothers were in town this weekend.
Yeah, I went and saw them, actually.
And I didn't see anything there.
No, I didn't either. Just, just good old music.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a continuation of consideration of, of your, of the ordinance that you talked about and, and actually held a public hearing on last, at your last meeting. We left the public comment open about the ordinance until yesterday. I forwarded the three, three comments that were received to you yesterday, and since then, we have received no more. There were some amendments to the ordinance, and you could, as you can see, we changed the definition of public place, included public recreation area in there. Any publicly owned property, we included that in there. We deleted the indoor area used by the general public and then added decks. So I think we, we fairly well clarified the definition of public space, as was discussed at the last meeting. And then there's a few other changes in it. And, and Brenda is here to make some comments, too.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brenda Tyes from the County Attorney's Office. And we're here on this proposed ordinance number 654, the ordinance regulating use of cannabis in public places. And the other changes that I was going to point out to you were with regard to adding some additional legislation statutes that are in place that provide the county with some enforcement and regulatory abilities. In particular, we, we, when this ordinance was written, my understanding is the county board wanted to be proactive in helping the public in addressing what might be or what they perceive to be as threats presented by the use or exposure of the use by our youth and other people in the community. We're citing now to the. We're citing now to the Public Health Statute, Minnesota Statute 145A.05 subdivision 1, to help support the, the ordinance, as well as a Clean Air Act statute, Minnesota Statute 144.417 subdivision 4 allows for public, local public governments, counties, cities, towns to enact ordinances that are more stringent than the state one, which makes an exposure, exposure even in outdoor areas that are connected or close to bars and restaurants as being an area that should be free from secondhand smoke or use of electronic vape, vape devices, I guess is what they're called. I'm not real familiar with them, but that, that is what the statute allows for. So that also helps enforce our ability to cover the county areas, which was one of the other understandings I have, is that the county board wanted to be able to assist the small towns and cities that don't, that don't have the ability or the resources to enact their own ordinance, but they would like an ability to prohibit certain areas and prevent the exposure of their citizens to these, to the cannabis.
And, Mr. Chair, I think we also clarified, I think there was a little bit of question of, if a city or town does adopt an ordinance, whether or not they can be more restrictive or less restrictive. And we clarified that language here that just says that if a local city or town adopts an ordinance, it just supersedes our ordinance.
Okay.
So they can do really whatever they want, whether they want to be less or more restrictive. I've had several cities and at least one township contact me with some questions about all of this, and I think this clarifies it as well.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank Brenda for answering a lot of questions that I had. I think we still got more questions than answers out of this legislation, so odds are we'll be seeing something again. They, both on the Public Health Statute, was reinforced from a couple of meetings I've participated in recently with MDH, so in terms of our authority. But want to particularly thank you for clarifying some of the outside components here, since we've got a lot of questions about that.
Other questions for Brenda?
Mr. Chairman, would you recommend, we've had interaction with some cities, and I shared it with Mike, would it be best for cities to enact a similar ordinance, even though we have the ordinance? Because then there'd be two, seems to me, the old farm boy, I mean, that says just both of us do it, and you got it better clarified. And I understand some cities won't want to, and townships especially, but this will cover them even if they don't. But would it be best if they did pass, because I think you gave them a template, didn't you, kind of, Mike, on the ordinance?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, they were provided with our ordinance. And I think, actually, the, the advice of the County Attorney's Office has been, when asked, that it's, that it would be best if they did adopt their own ordinance.
So I think we should maybe share that with cities, that if you can or want to, it might be best if you do.
Right.
Very much agree.
It's interesting, Mr. Chairman, the comments, obviously, we all got them, there's only three, but it's interesting what those comments, again, usually when I get an email or a letter, I think 100 people think the same way. So even though we got three comments, that's 300 people, minimally, are thinking what they're, what they've said. And I found that, the comments, pretty interesting.
Well, I'd rather, something like this, that local control ought to be our guideline. And if we don't have to do it, and the cities have the option, or the local communities have the option, let this local cities handle it. I think this is more of a make-work type of action. So I think the level of responsibility doesn't fall on this day. So, I mean, no.
You mean, no, not move the ordinance?
No, don't do a damn thing. If the local cities think it's important, let them do it. Now, if the local cities want some insight, or some support, or an opinion from our County Attorney's Office, great. But the idea that, that we need to double up sometimes on these opportunities, boy, that's a euphemism. I don't see the need.
What about the, Commissioner, what about the townships and the rest of the county?
What about them?
Do we want to go ahead and move forward on the, on the ordinance for those?
Local control, back when you were mayor, was that nice?
Okay, but the properties that are outside the municipalities?
They, so what? If they want to take action, why can't they?
I would just point out, if you want to change the ordinance to be just county property and county public property. I know the parks and the recreational areas were specifically asked for at the last hearing that they be covered. So that would be an amendment that could be made. I know other counties, just so the board knows, have passed similar ordinances that are more restrictive and cover their, their county's jurisdiction. They use and relied on the Public Health Ordinance to do that. There are a number of them waiting to see. It's all new legislation, it's hard to say what's going to come down the road with the new legislation. If you do pass the ordinance as proposed, you do have the ability to amend down the road. If you prefer, we can go back to the drafting table and draft something specific just for the county properties. There are a number of options that are available to you.
Commissioner Notch?
Oh, I was just going to recommend moving the ordinance as proposed.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to move the ordinance forward. And with that, I got a question for Dr. Williams, and that is with the ability for the other jurisdictions to supersede.
Right.
Correct? Okay.
Yes.
That's my understanding as well.
I'd make the observation, since we're in a discussion, that imagine a world where marijuana was accepted the way alcohol is now, and then at this point, the society was introducing the notion of alcohol. We'd have the very same argument, the very same discussion about the, how bad alcohol is. But, oh, well, yeah, and in some ways, that's true. I mean, look at all of the public money that's spent on programs for folks with an alcohol addiction. But that, yes, it doesn't apply in this case. But looking at it, and just reversing the timing on this, that would be the same outcome. But I digress.
Mr. Chair.
I'm having a cerebral attack here, and I'm dealing with it.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I actually had a similar conversation with myself, like, on a number of times, even when I talked with Brenda, is that this may be a transitional kind of thing. I'm going to say my, my butt for in a second here, but we're, you know, we're talking about something that's different than we're used to, we're talking kids. I don't know where the public's going to be in a few years, but right now, we know that there's a lot of questions about this, and so that's partially why I support it. The other thing is, is it's an intoxicating substance, and unlike alcohol, you breathe it. I mean, so it is a different thing, it's going to be interesting to see as we go on. And I think that the board's always been good at revisiting things when new evidence or information has been presented.
It won't go away because we can tax it.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Clark, I'm just curious, when you have a conversation with yourself, you talk out loud? I do, and I was just curious.
I occasionally do, a couple of the past.
I mostly do, it makes more sense when I talk.
I generally don't burst into song, though. So, in case you're wondering about that.
I'm glad I have the same problem.
Jeff, when you talk to yourself, do you still get interrupted?
I still, I disagree. I disagree with myself.
Okay, maybe we could all take a break.
That wasn't very good.
While it's still legal. All right. Any further discussion? We got a motion and a second to approve the adoption for the county with the abilities for local jurisdictions to supersede that. Any other further discussion? If not, I'll call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. Commissioner Bertram?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Notch?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Pirskey?
Aye.
Passes forward along.
Dr. Williams, we're moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the next item is really an extension of your, of your work session on the Jail Justice Center, and a suggestion that it, that it could be time to take some action to begin the process to employ an architect and a construction manager for that project. And I have the gentleman to my right to further the discussion on this.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kevin Kornick.
Good morning.
Facilities Manager. And like Dr. Williams said, this is really a continuation of our discussion we had in our special session two weeks ago that ran crazy long. And I wanted to make sure that you guys had the time to ask any questions that you had or discussions amongst each other. So this is really a continuation, but I'm going to run through the presentation again, and then open it up for questions or discussion, so. What we are asking for is the approval of the board to advertise for qualifications for an architect and a construction manager for the jail project. My intent would be to bring both of those partners on board at the same time, but separately. I think it serves the county best when we have a bit of a check and balance between those two versus bringing one on board and having them assist in hiring the second. So I think there's benefit to having them both on board upfront. And at the same time, they share the same information, so we're all working from the same page. What you see on the board here is a bit of a schedule and how that request for qualifications would take place, allowing, you know, it's a big project, so these firms are going to need some time to bring their partners on board and come up to speed. So we're proposing about a four-week published time, in which case we'll get them back. A committee, probably comprised of admin, the sheriff's office, the auditor treasurer's office, and myself would evaluate those and make a recommendation to the board. That evaluation period is going to take some time. My hope would be we can bring them firms up, see the project, and take our time with it. We want to make sure we get it right. We're going to be with, partnering with these people for several years, we want to make sure we get it right, so. Next slide. This schedule here shows a little bit bigger view, all the way out to Election Day 2024, which is the soonest we can add, put our sales tax question on the ballot. And really, what we're working for is to get us the best information we can by that May-June 2024. You'll see that sort of end of schematic design process is going to give us a good picture, some drawings, some schematics of what we want to do. It's going to give us some good pricing based on better-than-square-foot pricing, so that when we're going out to the taxpayers and we're asking for, for a sales tax, we have good information that we can stand behind, and any savings that we were able to realize, we can bring in, if we got to change the scope, those kinds of things. So really, that's, that's the schedule backed up from Election Day that brings us here today, is trying to allow that process to give us the best information to go out to the public with, and show the need and show the solution. So what I am proposing for, for a contractual setup with these firms is that through schematic design, we ask for a fixed-fee cost that takes, gives them some incentive to help us, you know, find those cost savings, and, and gives us the ability to move a little bit back and forth between some options and things like that without the percentage fee getting in the way of that, so. And at the same time, at this point, we're still undecided on where we want to do this. So my proposal would be that we carry two schematic designs forward until such time that the board is ready to make a decision on location. And that decision can really happen anytime. If we get through the first steps of schematic in meeting with all of our stakeholders, and one location becomes more clear than the other, we make the change, and we capture that whatever percentage of fixed fee back at that point. Once we complete schematic design, my proposal would be that we do a fee basis for both the architect and the construction manager, and that fee is set on the owner's budget, the owner's cost of work. So we don't necessarily control the fee that these people are charging, we control the number that fee is based off of. And that number can change at any time we see fit. If we get to a point that we want to make some cuts, or a fee we can change the scope, we change it, and their numbers change accordingly. That generally happens at the end of schematic, again, at the end of design development, and oftentimes at construction phase, too. So it's been my experience, I've seen that number change five or six times throughout the project, so. This gives you a little bit of an idea of the, of the process. Like I said, schematic design, absent a location being selected, I would propose that we carry two, a downtown site option and an alternative site option. That'll start really with preliminary design. So these people are going to come in, they're going to sit down with all of our stakeholder groups again, a lot like we did with the needs assessment. Sometimes, if you have a really solid needs assessment, that process is skipped. I think that would be a mistake. And this project, seeing that that needs assessment was done pre-COVID, we all know a lot of things have changed during that time. So I think that's a worthwhile exercise to run through those, those steps again, and meet with stakeholders, meet with other agency partners and other community partners to really make sure that we're looking at the right things post-COVID. At the same time, I would ask our partners to start doing some land acquisition research, because that's going to happen regardless if we're downtown or, or on an alternative site. And then some conceptual cost estimating. That still works in the world of square-foot numbers and areas and volumes and those kinds of things. But nonetheless, starting to develop a more firm budget with today's numbers. Once that's complete, the board has an opportunity to accept or make changes or make suggestions. And then from there, we move into schematic design, where we start putting lines on paper, start picking out some major system concepts, major finish concepts, those kinds of things. And really starting to develop a good picture of what we want to do. And then the cost estimating, having the construction manager on board right away, that cost estimating stays almost live as the architect is developing the drawings, the contractor's putting prices to all the different parts and pieces, so. Again, a little more detail on, on that design development phase. I would suggest that at the end of schematic design, we should have a, a decision made on location. I think carrying two designs into design development would be, it'd be an expensive proposition. That's a lot of work that goes in there, you're starting to really put some details on paper, so. This phase would, we would carry one design forward in the design phase. And again, just building on, building on detail, building on... And again, just building on detail, building on specifications, start picking some more detailed systems out and really start tightening up a budget so that when we go out for our sales tax later next year, we have a real firm idea where we're at and where we're headed. So... And then the subsequent construction documents, procurement, finally, construction phase. So... Questions?
Questions?
The real costs on this at this stage are lines on paper, which really isn't significant when compared to bricks and mortar. But this isn't particularly relevant to the immediate discussion. But I'll give Steve credit here in our last group discussion about this matter. At the very end of that discussion, he made the point of the personnel costs. And the punchline is the construction number, all of this effort to this, that'll go into this stage, that'll be nothing. Look where we've experienced here. The last project involving incarceration, you know, the construction of the current facility lasted for 30 years. But when we built that, we also had to hire a lot of people. And the hire a lot of people cost goes on every week, every month, every year over that 30 years. That's really the big cost in doing this. So I can't wait to get to that part. But punchline is, yeah, we got to proceed. And I'm surprised at this point that this isn't getting more public discussion, but maybe this is the start of it. But yeah, bricks and mortar are, even though it's a big number to us, it's a small number compared to personnel. Good job, Steve.
Thank you.
Well, here, I thought you were giving me credit.
You want to take it all yours? A lot of Steve's.
The jury is still out on this, Steve.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, one, I hope there's going to be some board involvement along that process when you say you're going to bring in admin and that we keep posted on at least some input or directly a board member. I'm not sure how you're going to plan on doing it. But certainly, I hope you share things with us and those of us that want to read that. Do you have an estimate cost at all in mind? I mean, do you have any clue to what we're talking about?
I've generally seen fees 5% to 6% of construction cost for architects, 2% to 3% for construction managers. I think our study partners estimated a little higher than that on the downtown site simply because of the other moving utilities, moving streets, all those things that just exist. So I think in our master planning options, our architects' fees were closer to 8%, 6% on an alternative site, 8% on a downtown site. Outside of that, it's really going to depend on where the firm is from and what kind of partners they're bringing on.
So two and a half million?
Well, 6% or 8% of 300 or 3 million.
Two and a half to three million.
Yeah.
And this chairman, that leads me then to the next point. At the end of the work session, I suggested, it just seems to me, again, I'm not an architect or engineer, but the more specific we would be, the better even the beginning of this process would be. And I still say that we would be best served had we, or would we decide, one, it'll be a green space, two, or the alternative, and then, two, it would be just the jail or the entire project. Now, at the end, I did say, with your advice, I can see some benefit to doing everything and then having the ability to scale it down. That would be my only preface. But otherwise, I'm open to that, to doing everything with the understanding that we may scale it down. But I do believe we'd be better served if we did narrow it down the site before we got into this because, again, if we know it's going to be a green space or the alternative, then we know that. And I'm not sure, I was hoping we'd be there by now.
I would offer that let's also include, if you're going to include total cost, you got to include personnel. And that's not the personnel involved in the building of this. The personnel and operations will be a significant number. And it's actually going to be a number that's greater than the construction cost. You can focus on location, well, this analogy we both can appreciate, until the cows come home. But the reality is, I think we're going to discover that we're going to be dealing with a number that is so significant, we're going to have to consider doing this in stages. And how we can break this task down to do that is going to be the real challenge. We're really missing the point, and the public is of the opinion that the significant consideration where it's going to be. Hell, the cost is significant. And, well, we'll have a better idea of cost once we have a location. We can go a long way down the road on looking at cost without location being the critical issue here and plus the personnel. Yeah, I get asked about the location stuff all the time. And you just heard how I explain it when I get that question. But, well, this will be an adventure. This will be, well, I was not here when we built the current jail. But, yeah, this is a significant step. But we got to keep moving. Got to get that discussion out in front of the public and keep moving on it. What do you need from us specifically today, Ben? You just need authorization to hire these two folks?
Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, that's the motion in front of you is to authorize staff to release the RFQ for advertisements.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to move the proposal forward for the RFQs. Any further discussion? Any people want to put some input in here?
Commissioner, if I may, to Commissioner Bertram's point, I think there's definitely savings to be had, providing our partners better information, like, you know, carrying two designs into schematic, realistically, is going to cost us a half a million dollars if we took it all the way to the end. But if there's information that, or, you know, they might come up with some ideas we haven't, you know, it could be a different firm, we could learn some things. So, you know, if we have the information to give them, I think it's good if we can make decisions and point them in one direction. But if we feel we need to entertain some other outside ideas, that's the opportunity to do it. So it's that.
Commissioner Clark?
Actually, you're going towards the question I have, which is, nothing would preclude us from saying stop when we get to the point that we can give them the best information. There would be a penalty, hopefully it would reduce costs at that point.
Yep, exactly, yeah.
Okay, so they would be alerted that our goal is to figure this out as quickly as possible. And they may give us some other information. And I think Commissioner Lenzmeyer's point about personnel is really well-taken. It's something we need to be cognizant of.
I know that the personnel, any assumptions or estimates on the personnel impact on this, at best, will be a hand grenade estimate. But the punchline is, it still merits discussion at this point because construction and location, and always what I deem to be extraneous issues, how can you say this is extraneous issue? Because the personnel number will be bigger. Jeez.
Mr. Chairman, we could start this and then within weeks, potentially narrow it down.
Absolutely. Yes.
So that would be, that's my point, Mr. Chairman, is do this, but let's, if we can, and while we need to, and I think we should do it sooner than later, get it narrowed down to at least green space downtown minimally, and then potentially just the jail or everything, you know, start. So we can start this, get to that, and I guess that's my request, let's get to that sooner than later.
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Bertram, you're absolutely right. We can structure that. As one of the benefits of having a fixed fee upfront is we can ask them to identify, you know, what's your preliminary design? That's going to apply to either option. What's your cost to option A? What's your cost to option B? And if we get to a point where we don't need option B, we know what that deduction's going to be upfront, so, or at some point along the way.
What's that?
I call a question.
You can't, I didn't get a chance to speak yet.
But he called the question, so we're done.
Sometimes being the majority.
Majority on that. Okay. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No?
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Notch?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Bertram?
Aye.
Commissioner Persky?
No, and we're not being listened to. I've got a great objection of what we're trying to do here, but we're not moving forward in a positive way and getting the public the chance to get their, chance to give us input. Okay, I've revoiced my opinion several times, but at the last meeting, I was led down a path, putting it into a direction the way where we were entaken. Not by what we want, not by what we wanted, but by the group that was in the room what they wanted. I felt like I was at a sale of a piece of property at a timeshare, and I was going to have to sign the contract. We've got a building over here, that courthouse, and we haven't talked about vacating that and what we're going to do if we vacate that. This building here, we've got a floor and a half of unoccupied space. And we want to build more space, but we have not using everything that's here. And now we want to take it to a full-scale build-out, either here or at another spot. I think we're going in the wrong direction because we haven't heard from the public what they want. When I talk to people about it, and I mentioned we're going to spend a third of a billion dollars on a full justice center, I get a lot of pushback. And they say, you're absolutely nuts. So you didn't want to have any discussion on that. We can move forward with this, but I'd like to see what the public has to say because I think we're heading in the wrong direction.
So that wasn't expressing your opinion, Joe?
Yeah.
That wasn't expressing your opinion?
I'm sorry.
Were you expressing your opinion there?
Yes, I was.
Okay, well, you got your opportunity then.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, again, I think we all five have a right to express our opinion, and we need to have a discussion. This isn't quick and fast or cheap. I mean, this is a major decision, as I've said in every work session, and the five of us are the ones that are going to have to make it, nobody else. And you have that right, Mr. Chairman, and you have been consistent. And I've been consistent, but let's go down this path. But I also said at the beginning, we better have a consensus because if all five of us aren't onboard, this isn't going to work, in my opinion. But again, some people know more than others and will go that path. But right now, I support what we're doing with the understanding that we can identify its place and downscale it, but we better get there sooner than later. I'm ready to express my opinion, and I have on both of those. Unfortunately, not all of us have. But let's get to that point. And you guys that are working through this, Steve and Mike and everybody else, let's get to that point where we can express ourselves and then say, okay, this is what we're looking at. And then we can each individually decide, are we going to support it or are we not? And as I said with school referendums, you show me a school board that's not unanimous behind a referendum, and I'll show you a referendum that doesn't pass. So I guess the ultimate question that a lot of people, including the timeshare folks at the last meeting, anybody can have any grand ideas they want. If it doesn't pass, we got nothing. And again, I do believe we need a jail. I do believe, you know, we can develop support for that. But, and again, Mr. Chairman's point, he and everybody, each one of us have a right to express our opinion, and this isn't something that we want to fast-track. So right now, we're going to move forward with this.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we're going to have the discussion sooner than later to narrow it down. And then in the future, please, all what I ask, and I asked Mike this in an email, any future presentations, at least, please present it to the board that we can buy in and saying, yep, that's what we'd like to hear from or whatever. I'd really not rather sit through another timeshare presentation, please. That's a good analogy, by the way, Mr. Chairman.
Well, even though it won't be a number hard and fast, at least give us an idea of present value on future personnel costs. Because they're going to have to hire a bunch of staff for whatever plan we go forward with. The discussion on public spending always turns on the hard cost. Personnel is somehow kind of left behind the curtain. So I hope that's included in the future. But I doubt, seriously, this is the last discussion we'll have about this. This will be a big enchilada. We might wind up doing this stuff in phases or in partitions and so forth. But, yeah, this is part of the process.
We're just about ready for a break. And again, I do hope we get some public input on this.
We're getting it.
I've been hearing some things. Okay, all right. Anything else? Then we'll go ahead and we'll take a break.
Lee said he wasn't.
Come on, I think people want to get back to the soap opera here. Okay, we'll move on with administration, we're going to take a look at budget. Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members, this is kind of the kickoff for the 2024 budget approval process, we've been at it, of course, since May, I think internally, end of May. But, and as, as we've done in the past, and a number of years ago, we started paying a little more attention to performance measures, and really think that's important, that, that the board gets a feel for how we're doing, actually, and in, in, in our departments and in our programs and the services, and how we're doing in our responsibilities and our mandates, prior to really getting into the numbers of, of the budget. So realizing you haven't, haven't really seen the, the dollars and cents of the budget yet, we, we, we wanted to start the process with a look at performance measures. Having said that, I did forward to you the executive summary of the budget, just yesterday, I realized that, and that'll be a part of your agenda packet before your next meeting, that, that memo will also be put on the website so the public can see it. Hopefully, that's a good summary of, of the, of the budget that you'll be considering before you adopt the preliminary levy at the end of September, and then, of course, the final budget in December. So I, I just wanted to give a little bit of a preface of, of what that budget looks like, you see the numbers, but, but it really is, I, I like to say, looking at it, that it's an investment in transportation, it's an investment in public safety, and it's an investment in, in health, and, and all those, of course, revert right back to our mission and values, because you're going to see that there's a, there's a fair amount of expenditures in public safety, a catch-up with squad cars, there's, we don't have the study to show you it, but we've got the dis, the study about the dispatchers, and we know that that's going to come with a recommendation within, with, with significant amount of more employees. There's a social worker in the jail in the budget, there's a new corrections officer, and there's even a, a person that will be assigned to cybersecurity. You'll also see if there's a significant increase in transportation, in the transportation, road and bridge levy. We've really kept that flat in the last number of years, and I think it, it was time that, that we raised that levy and, and really, and caught up with that levy, in addition to make up for the, the increased expenditures that we're seeing. And then, and then, as I said, an investment in health, and you're going to hear from, from our human services administrator about unwinding the public health emergency and the, the regulations, the relaxation of regulations came along with that, and the budget includes a supervisor in public health, the budget includes another person in parks, so all of that, those three, I think priorities are coming through in this budget, and I think that it, that the, the last thing that you'll see is that we're trying to prudently use some reserves and some of those one-time monies that we're going to see, we have an increase in CPA, we have one-time public safety dollars, we have the ARP dollars, and we have a significant fund balance in human services, and so we're trying to make reasonable use of all of that while looking into our future budgets. So you're going to see a, a budget there that does have an increase in the property tax levy of two and a half percent, again, offset by a number of use of reserves. The last thing you're going to see is a significant increase in, in the, in the tax capacity, and that, that, I think it's, what, roughly 10, 10%? 10%? And so that, that increase in the, in the, in the property tax levy actually turns out to be a significant decrease, again, in the, in the property tax rate. So hopefully, the, the executive summary is helpful, you'll receive the budget book with the more details so that that'll match up with, with the executive summary before, you'll get that before your next meeting, too. But the kickoff here is a talk about performance measures, we try to do this annually, and then we also have a couple of things that are budget-related to do after this part of the agenda. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hamis.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Steve Hamis, I'm the Assistant County Administrator, and as Dr. Williams indicated, we're here to talk about performance measures today. Again, the, the detail on the numbers is going to be next time, but again, for the public, 85% of what the county does is mandated by either the state or federal government, and so it's more of a discussion than we wanted to have today about, you know, what does some of that entail, how are we doing on some of those measures? And administration has really been encouraging departments to work every year on improving performance measures to help refine the story of what we do and, and, and the activities that we undertake in terms of working for the public. And again, not all measures are, are created equal, and so there are some measures that we encourage departments to have, that are really something for their internal processes, and other ones have bigger scopes, and other ones are more operationally at the global level, and those are the ones that we're bringing forward today. And as I mentioned, we also participate in the state's performance measurement program, those measures, those 10 measures that we use as part of that program, were submitted to the board in June to be part of that program. This is a wider cast for ones that we work with departments on an annual basis to look at. But performance measures, again, is, in general, is just a way to tell the story based on data. Again, it's always best if you can have data to back up your actions and your decisions, and so we want to make sure that the departments are working, again, to continually improve having performance measures that are quantifiable, that relate to the activities that we do, and show results in some of our, our actions. Some other good measures or other characteristics of performance measures are that it's relevant, that it's, again, something that's understandable by the public. Again, so some measures that departments work on are really for internal operations in terms of how their workflows are, are working, as opposed to, again, a, a larger global goal. It's something that's timely, that it's something that you can keep track of, and it's not having a lag time of several years, it's something that's comparable across time, we're really working with departments to make sure that our measures are something we can track across several years as we move forward, and other measures are ones that we hope to be able to compare to other jurisdictions in the future. Again, we want to make sure that our, our measures are reliable and something that is showing the actual truth of what's going on, and it's cost-effective. You don't want to have a, a measure that's more costly to create the measure than it is to actually provide the service. With that, I'll jump in, I have a couple of departments that are going to do their measures for them, since I have them here, I'll be doing the rest of them. The first screen is just looking at some general overall descriptions of the county as a, as a base of reference for the public as they, they think about our measures and who we are and what we do. So the first one, I do need my glasses to even go to the screen. The first part of that is looking at the general fund, again, the general fund is the fund that operates most of the departments, except for human services, highway, and parks, all of the other departments in the, in the county are part of the general fund, and so you can see the growth of that fund over the past several years, from 64 million in 2019 to 66 million in 2022. That number obviously fluctuates over time, and you can see in 2020 during the pandemic, with all the federal money that we received, that number went quite high. Stearns County is one of the largest counties in the state by size, we're at 1,300, 1,300 square miles, our population, according to the state demographer's office, for 2022 was 160,000, which is up from the 2020 census number of 158,000. Stearns County has about a quarter of our population that is under the age of 18, and that's, that holds fairly steady. Again, about a quarter of our population, just slightly above, have at least a bachelor's degree under their belts. The median household income, there is a lag there based on when deed gets the data, and so the median household income in the county has gone up from 62,000 in 2019 to 68,000 in 2021. I've added labor participation rate, and so for the public, that is a measure of all those people who are of qualified working age between the age of 16 and social security eligibility. What percentage of that population is working in the, in the labor force, and in Stearns County, that number is 70.9%. So that's a very high number, and Minnesota typically has very high labor participation rates compared to other parts of the country, and so we're in good stead there. Our, the next number is our poverty rate, and again, this is measured by the Census Bureau and the state deed, and so our, our poverty level has been between 10 and 13%. Again, that is something that will fluctuate over time from year to year. Unemployment rate is the annual unemployment rate for the entire county as measured by the Federal Reserve, and you can see that 5% is considered a normal churn of unemployment, and so you expect 5% on, it would be where you'd want to be for a healthy economy. Stearns County, for the past several years outside of 2020, has been below that, and that's part of the labor shortages that we've been talking about with the board for the past several years, and that continues, and so last year's unemployment rate was 2.7%. All right, sorry, going into some of our departments and the measures that they have, the first one is the county attorney's office, and looking at the criminal division numbers, members of the CJCC heard about this this morning as well, criminal cases that are referred to the county attorney's office by any police agency in the county have been increasing from when we started this measure in 2012, it hit about 2,300 in 2018, it then had a dip in 19 and 20, 2021 was a catch-up year, and that number increased to 2,500, and that number has decreased a little bit in 2022, and we're on pace to be at just over 2,000 criminal cases in 2023. In the juvenile division, this chart is looking at, the top line is CHIPS cases, so these are, again, where we're looking at child endangerment issues, to be honest.
Children in need of placement is CHIPS.
All right, thank you. And so that number, of course, is going to fluctuate over time, it hit a peak of about 250 cases in 2015, a little bit higher than that, 2018, that number slid in 2019 and 2020, that number is on track to continue to go down to about 200 on pace this year. The one I want to point out is the truancy number, which is the green line on the bottom, that's the number of people, again, children who are having issues with attending school throughout the county, that the county attorney's office and human services are involved in those numbers. As you can see, mostly kind of resonate around about 50 people per year, there was a spike in 2016 and 17, that number has gone up significantly since 2021, when it had been low in 2022, and so that is something that, again, CJCC was having a discussion on this morning, on how we can crack that, that nut. And now we have moved to the Otter's Office, and I'll have Randy to go.
So the first one is the bond rating, the bond ratings typically go from C to AAA, and we're at a double A plus, we've had three upgrades since 2001. You know, some of the positives is a financial policies and practices they, they rate, some of the things that are a little bit out of our control is economic factors and the underlying debt, that's preventing us to get to that highest level, but double A plus is a very good rating, so.
I think we're always told we're, we're pretty much incapable of receiving the.
Yeah, there's nothing, you know, our county can really do to get there, it's just the environment that the county is in, so. Okay, next one is debt service levy per capita, generally that's been going down, and, and what we do, of course, with the law enforcement center and the CIP discussion will affect that, but we, we're in pretty good shape here and, and could get better in the future, too, depending on what happens, so. Drive-through customer count, so we're the only location in the state that has two drive-through lanes, which was very helpful during the pandemic, so we, of course, peaked during those times, that number has come down, but we still see a lot of people use the drive-through, and it's a very appreciated customer service that we have.
Randy, if I can inter, just stop for a minute, you know, I know that's a very popular service, and a lot of folks do like that, was there any chance that we could perhaps even have that a little bit extended hours, would that work at all, so that, you know, maybe it goes an hour after our closure of our regular? I'm, I'm thinking that we've got people that, you know, are finished with work, and then, you know, they, they'd like themselves do something like that.
Right, we, we keep track of the, the count by hour, and once you get past 4:30, the numbers just drop right off. We have it open till 5 o'clock, and in the past, we've had it open longer.
Okay.
But it's just.
Okay, I'm just curious, that would work?
Yeah.
All right.
The virtual license center, so we have the most services offered on our virtual license center than any other county. Of course, during the pandemic, that was very popular, and we see the numbers go up. I think the numbers have stayed higher, but of course, as people can come back in, then that numbers have gone down, so that was a very. So that was a very, I'm glad we had that for people during the pandemic. That was very helpful, so. The wait time, of course, during the pandemic, we had some changes there because people dropped off and did it by appointment. The wait times have gone up a little bit in two thousand and twenty-three just because of staffing challenges, but I think they're acceptable wait times that we have now, so. Quarterly tax payment plans, so we do a quarterly and a monthly plan where if they sign up, we'll automatically take that out of their bank account. People then don't have to worry about it being late or anything else. It's kind of like an extension of a mortgage or an escrow account. So that those numbers continue to go up. I think we have, you know, another twenty-five percent increase in the last year. So it's a very good program that people appreciate, so. Electronic statement delivery, so this is delivering of the tax statements and the TNT notices. Again, people appreciate that. They can get it faster, get it in the form they want. For the county, we save on postage. So again, this is something that continues to increase, and we're gonna be promoting this more in the future, so. I think we're at over forty-five hundred now, if I do it that way, so.
All right, and then we move over to the Highway Department. The first measure here is looking at pavement conditions. And so again, we have the state comes in and does an audit of our pavement on every two-year basis. And yes, I see that it should say two thousand twenty on the first column on the left and not two thousand twenty-two on both. That's my mistake. The state has criteria, excuse me, that they look for. And in pavement conditions, the goal was that less than five percent of jurisdictions' pavement should be in poor condition, that more than seventy-five percent of pavement should be in good or excellent condition. So in two thousand twenty, we had two and a half percent, two point seven percent that were in poor, fifteen percent that were in fair, and we were eighty-two percent in good or excellent condition. So we were already surpassing the state's goals for our pavement condition. So then two thousand twenty-two, they came out and did another review, and our percentage of payments that were in the poor condition has now fallen to one point nine percent, and the percentage in good or excellent condition is at eighty-five percent. So again, the use of the local option sales tax to go towards funding the road construction projects and allowing us to do a lot of catch-up in the last few years has really been able to help improve and keep our highway system where it should be. The next one is looking at road maintenance costs per mile. Again, we have about nine hundred and seventy lane miles of highway in our system. All but seventeen miles of that system are paved. And so again, in order to maintain that, there's summer operations, obviously, with patch, patchwork, crack ceiling. There's also winter operations in terms of snow plowing, all that has costs. And so back in two thousand fourteen, when we started tracking this measure, it was about eight thousand dollars per lane mile in order to maintain the road system that we had, not counting construction, just actual maintenance activities. And that number has steadily risen over the years, as you would expect. At two thousand twenty-one, it was at ninety-four hundred per mile. And with the impact of inflation that we've had in the last year, or so you can see that that number has really increased to over eleven thousand dollars per mile just to maintain the system based on the work that we do currently. A lot of that was, as Jody mentions in her notes, based on the increases in fuel costs as well as materials, because there was a large increase in, you know, be it sand, salt, or two minutes. So that's why that number's gone up. In Human Resources, one of the goals from the county board was to look at diversity in terms of applicants and employees that we reflect, the community that we serve. And so on this chart, you can see that in terms of the applicant pool, the people who are applying for jobs, what the percentage of people either who are persons of color or people who are disabled that are in our applicant pools are showing. And so we were at fourteen percent in two thousand twenty-one for persons of color. That's risen in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three to be just under twenty percent. And for disabled applicants, it was seven and a half percent in two thousand twenty-one, and we're at ten percent of the applicants currently are identifying as being disabled. In terms of what that reflects then, in terms of the employee population, in two thousand twenty-one, four point eight percent of our employee population were identifying as persons of color, and now in two thousand twenty-three, that number has gone up to five point seven. Now, again, I do have on here that fourteen percent of the county's population identifies as persons of color based on the census data. So we're not, we're not totally reflecting the community at this point, but we have been steadily improving over the past several years.
Question on that, but the percentage earlier, is that of employable? Or is that of, I mean, if you're talking about children, you've got disproportionate number of children in there that are not employable?
Yes, the fourteen percent is total county population regardless of age, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, along those lines, it's probably good to see what the apples to apples adult populations are. And then my other question with this one is percent of new hires, both for people who are disabled or people who are persons of color. If we can get that at some point.
Give us a timeline, when do we have to do what?
There is, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, there is no action that you need to take regarding this presentation. This is just for your information, is part of the budget process in terms of when the county does.
I mean, we have to have our flipping place, X, Y, Z.
I'll be taking care of that at the end of the presentation. I have a couple of stats on that.
We are, thank you, you demand.
That's twice in one day. I'm not sure I can.
Mr. Chair, I think we're keeping track.
You have one compliment today and one criticism.
I need to play the lottery, all right.
You gotta keep the level up.
All right. The next measure from Human Resources, something to take a look at, is just organizational turnover. Again, we, just as any other employer in the area, are in a difficult job market with the fact that there are lots of jobs always being advertised and not as many people available to take those jobs. But turnover is something that happens on a regular basis, be it people moving on to different employment, two people retiring. And so looking at our turnover, anywhere between ten and twelve percent of turnover in a year is generally considered to be normal operating. So on a countywide basis, we are, you know, not exceeding that at this point. We're, you know, at eleven or twelve percent in terms of turnover the last few years. So we're doing okay in terms of turnover there. Now, certain job fields, as we've discussed in the past, are harder to get recruits for, be it people to work in the jail, people to work in IT, nursing, or social work. But as a global level, our turnover is within expectations. And with that, I'm gonna turn over to Melissa. I've had the expert come in to go over her performance measures.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Our first one is regarding the Community Action Team, the CAT team. And we've been to the board on a number of occasions with this collaboration. It continues to save taxpayer dollars and serves people better. This is our collaboration with Law Enforcement, Centricare, the Mental Health Center. We have a social worker in the jail, working with corrections and social services, and we're just working preventatively now. So we're serving people earlier in the process before they're doing those deep-end services, and we're still seeing the savings. I'm hoping next year, we'll be back with our JCAT team, which is our Juvenile Community Action Team. We've been informally calling it the Kitty Cat Team, but that's working with juveniles has the same effect. We can already see the early indicators and actual, the Director of Family and Children's, Nick Henderson, and I'll be presenting at AMC in December on the early results of that as well. Our second measure is a recidivism goal for community corrections. And what's really interesting about this is there's been a lot of change with people being discharged from prisons. So the fact that we're staying at above our percentages here is really excellent. For supervised release parole, it's, we need to be above sixty-five percent. And actually, people who are being discharged to the community have a lot more complex needs, so the correction agents are dealing with a lot more issues than the people that they're supervising in that area. And probation supervision to stay above eighty-five percent for not committing a new felony offense after three years passed when they're discharged. So Community Corrections has fifty-five, I think, correction agents, and they serve over four thousand five hundred people, and they're doing really excellent work in that area, and we monitor that, so. The final one is not as exciting to most people, but it's exciting to me because it's a fiscal goal, and I love budget. But targeted case management, this is a very complex formula that goes into this. And so we work on monitoring, trying to get our reimbursements increased, and has a lot to do with random moments and caseload sizes and other formulas from the state that we have no control over. So we monitor this and try to raise our rates, and we've been doing an awesome job in that area.
All right, well, thank you.
And we do have a lot of other performance measures that we do across the department, so we try to improve on all of our measures, so.
Yes, and again, Human Services is an example of a department that does have multiple ones, some of which are, again, really more focused and useful on the unit or the program level to make sure that they're continuing to improve on their operations. These are the ones that certainly are more global and have an impact for you as a board and in the budget overall. Moving over next to Property Services, the first measure I want to just highlight there is the requirement to assess a certain percentage of all the county's parcels on an annual basis. Under statute, we are required to look at twenty percent minimum of all the parcels on an annual basis. You can see here, we've been tracking for the past several years that we have been at ninety-nine or ninety-eight percent of that mark for the past several years compared to only ninety-three to ninety-five percent for the entire state. Do you have a question, Commissioner Bridger? Okay.
Just really have my attention right now.
He's bored after Human Services is done.
When we think about that, that's, you know, again, looking at this slide, that's between twelve and fourteen thousand parcels that are supposed to be examined on a yearly basis. And so you can see that, you know, our department has been looking at, again, you know, in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and then forward, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-six, and twenty-six percent of the parcels in the county each year to make sure that we're in compliance with the state requirement. So the reason we didn't hit a hundred percent in this last year is, as you can see here, it says there's three hundred and thirty-one parcels that were in the role that was selected that weren't hit. But again, we exceeded that in overall parcels throughout the year. The next measure is a measure on GIS, and I want to, I brought this forward to highlight, again, the fact that our Property Services Department has several ways for the residents of the county to use GIS services to look up information on their parcel, be it through the county's property viewer, through the surveyor's office, or issues related to tax forfeiting and addressing issues. And you can see on the property viewer that the number of people that have been looking at this, our portal, has risen from a hundred and ninety thousand hits to over two hundred and almost two hundred and twenty thousand hits in a year. And so, and it's a good tool for the public to be able to use to access information related to property that they own or are looking to buy. The next measure is looking at recording services. Again, we have a requirement from the state. This is another mandate that within ten days of someone submitting a document to be recorded, we have to have ninety percent of those records actually having been through the entire process and completing the recording journey. So we have been compliant all of the years that we've been tracking this, except for two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one during the pandemic, when we had significant staffing issues in the recorder's office, and we weren't able to meet the compliance in those two years. Otherwise, our compliance record has been about ninety-eight percent of the time we've been able to get all the documents recorded within ten days. Moving over next to the Sheriff, the Sheriff submitted a performance measure looking at the clearance rate, and this is looking at just those crimes that are reported to the Sheriff's Office itself, not to the other policing units in the county, so not the St. Cloud PD, not the other municipalities in the county that have their own police department. And so you can see, again, for property crimes, we've risen from a thirteen percent clearance rate to a twenty, and on violent crimes, we're in the seventies percent percentage range for clearance on violent person crimes. The next performance measure is looking at call response time. So when someone calls nine-one-one, how fast can we get a squad car out to someone's house? Again, the measure is looking at those call types that are the highest priority. We get a large number of call volume into the dispatch center. Not all of the calls are an emergency. Some calls are people dialing by mistake, they're looking for information, they want to be transferred somewhere else. So looking at just those calls that are high priority, true emergency calls, what is the response time in order to get a squad or a fire truck or ambulance out to someone's location? You can see when we started this, tracking this, when we were at sixteen and a third minutes. And over the course of the last several years, and using the study when we last had someone come in from the National, what is the name of the firm?
ICMA.
From ICMA to do a study on the Sheriff's Office and Operations to help make improvements, we've been able to get that number down to the ten, eleven-minute range. So that, again, is very critical when someone's life can be at stake. The last measure I'm gonna go over, or series of measures, is looking at the Veterans Office. Again, for this department, it's a small department. We have about five staff in this office, serving all of the veterans in the county or those that are utilizing services at the VA Center that's located here. Makes us a regional center for veterans. The state VA Department is listing that the county had just under ten thousand veterans in the county in two thousand eighteen, and that number has been decreasing over the last several years. They're now showing for two thousand twenty-two a veteran count of ninety-five hundred veterans living in the county. I'm not gonna read all of these, you can certainly do that at your discretion. The one I really wanted to focus your attention to is the bottom one, which is the amount of federal money that's coming in to veterans and their families in Stearns County, you know, that over the last several years. So in two thousand eighteen, we had fifty-one million dollars of federal money coming in to support local veterans and their families, and over the last several years, that number has now risen to seventy-one million dollars. So even as the veterans' population is shrinking, the amount of money that's coming in to support them has been growing. That's all of the measures I wanted to talk about this time. Again, as Dr. Williams indicated, at the next board meeting, we'll be going over the nuts and bolts of all the details in the budget. But as I indicated to Commissioner Lenzmeyer with this question, this slide is an overview of the budget process. I have here that packets are developed in the administration in April. Some departments, like Human Services, actually start their budget process in March because of all the different mechanisms that they have to do with. The budget is a very complicated and very time-consuming process for departments, because there's a lot of moving parts that we don't always get the answers to on a regular basis. As I indicated, eighty-five percent of our activities are mandated by state and federal agencies, and a lot of that, we do get a lot of state and federal money to help support those activities, not enough, and certainly not all. But we don't always know about those federal or state revenue sources until August, sometimes not until September. So we do our best to work with the information that we have, and we start, again, working on that very early in the year. During May, packets are distributed to departments, and so that's when their work begins in earnest. Budget proposals are due to administration in June. The budget team, which is made up of Dr. Williams, Randy Schreifels, myself, and Sarah Och, our finance director, meet with departments to review those requests in the middle of July. The Otters Office Administration spend a lot of time scouring over all the line items to make sure that there aren't any holes or missing numbers, which, again, there often are because it's a complicated process, and then make discussions on how to reduce the budget. We never bring forward a budget that's just a pass-through of what department asked for. We always try to make sure that the numbers are as lean as we can get them before we come here in front of you. And so again, August and September is when we bring forward the budget that we've been able to refine. At your September twenty-sixth meeting is when you'll have to set a preliminary budget and levy. This year, the truth in taxation or public hearing will be held on November twenty-eighth, and then the board has to adopt a final budget, most likely at your December twelfth meeting. And then again, I just put in a slide here as an overview, and I know Dr. Williams covered that at the beginning, looking at our, at this point in time where we're at today, budget expenses to only go up one point six percent, a levy increase of two point four nine percent, and with a tax capacity increase of, I think, ten point three, to be honest. That'll result in a reduction in the tax rate for property owners of seven point one four. And with that, if there's any questions, we can try to answer them.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I didn't know you were gonna get more into this at one of the next meetings. Can you go back to that last slide? So part of why this proposal is able to have the levy or suggests that we have that particular levy is because of the increase in our county aid, right? And you and I were talking a little bit about this before. There are, I mean, as you were talking about the things you don't know because of the legislature, you know, there's some things that are still being found out, or even as we were talking about cannabis earlier, there will likely be some additional expenses. about cannabis earlier, there will likely be some additional expenses. We have reason to believe there's going to be some more expenses coming in the next year. So do you mind, like the Paid Family Medical Leave Act, I mean, the state one, we've really tried hard to do a good job on our end anyways, but can you just talk a little bit about what are but for the CPA increase, what this levy, proposed levy increase would be? And then also, do you have many outstanding policy changes or budget changes that you're still looking at that we might need to be reflecting on in the next month?
I don't know if I can answer it succinctly or well enough to maybe...
I know, it's a very big budget, so I almost feel bad asking the question.
It might be, I'll try, but I think we can probably do better justice at the next meeting.
No, that's fine. Yeah, as long as it's coming, I'm fine with it.
Without the increase in CPA or some of the other one-time monies that we've had, or some of the other increases in revenues from other programs, you know, at one point in the budget process, I think we were looking at a 6% or 7% levy increase, you know, just based on what the needs happen to be. But again, between cutting things outright and finding better ways to fund things, like revenue increases or use of one-time funding, we've been able to come up with the budget that we have here.
Right, that was attempting to be a neutral comment. I recognize we were just hearing earlier today because of inflation as it relates to our transportation costs, and we're trying to do more, so we've got increases there. It's just, we're also getting, about to be having some significant, more unfunded mandates, even with a whole lot of pushback about that. And we might not see it in this year's budget, but we may see it in next year's. And a part of the reason why I'm asking is that there was a lot to celebrate with that CPA increase, and yet, we're going to, you know, it's like the hammer's going to fall at some point in time in terms of what it means for our cost.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you know, in a simple calculation, the $3.2 million CPA would be almost 3% on our levy, in addition to some of the other things. But as you've expressed, I mean, we have costs that are increasing. There was some other help through the legislature, too, that again, costs increased. We're also, in this proposed budget, we're going to use less of our fund balances, which we see we need to start to do that, use less, we're making up some of that, too. So there's a lot of moving parts, as you suggest.
Randy, so that 2.49, that 2.5%, that does include the CPA, that we, the additional funding that we did receive?
It does, yeah. And as Mike said, we used one-time funding last year, and we're going to use it again this year. We have one-time funding, and it always is an art of how much do you use, you're not, you know, in the future, going to get that, so you have to be careful how you use that.
Right. Yeah, Mr. Chair, we heard from some comments before our meeting today about what we can or can't do as a county, and I just was thinking, it's probably worth, at this point in time, reminding people, not only are we a creature of the state, we literally, under Dylan's rule, I mean, we are created by the state, we are told what we have to do by the state. And so some of what you're bringing to us reflects some attempts to be bringing costs down in them, but it also reflects the many things that we're required to do, and maybe not all the new things that we're going to be required to do quite yet, because that won't be until 2025, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, for, this is going to be my first full cycle of the budget, and I started asking questions back in June, one, when we'd be able to see the budget, and then also this whole performance review, and I'm still trying to get my arms around all that. But just for what it's worth, as one member at least, sure would appreciate if we could get information earlier. One, the budget, I mean, at best, we might get a chance to look at it fully twice, and then getting some of the information on Friday, and then, as recently as last night, the slide presentation. For those of us that want to kind of dig into this a little bit before, that would be helpful, and those of us that are working full-time and have an active personal life, it's kind of a challenge sometimes. So, you know, I'd be interested, and again, this ship has sailed for this year, but when you start having those meetings, just some engagement, I think, would be helpful. One, to give a different perspective; two, to get a better understanding how that process actually works when your budget team does meet, what things were cut. I'd be curious with some examples of what was brought to you that were cut, you know, just so there's a better, better understanding, at least from my level, on how that process works, and maybe some suggestions on how to make it work better. I can't offer that if I don't know the process, so for whatever it's worth.
For detail that you might want checked, would an individual session might be more appropriate? I've done this a couple...
With you?
No.
You kind of scared me there for a little bit, Commissioner.
That could happen, honestly.
I haven't taken my meds yesterday.
And I wouldn't want to do it now. Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. It would be, and I wouldn't want to do that now, because, again, this ship has sailed. But I'd like to have a better understanding earlier in the process for 2024.
We can work on that.
And it gets easier.
Yeah.
Harder to justify, but it gets easier.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is the public assistance healthcare renewal process, and this is the whole unwinding of the public health emergency regulations. As we were just talking about, the budget is a dynamic process, a little bit fluid, particularly, I would say, this year because of some of the monies that we're receiving from the state, and this is one of those areas. And I'm going to have Ms. Huberty talk about that.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Melissa Huberty. I'm the Human Services Administrator, and I have with me Michael Poehler, who is our Human Services Director of our Gateway Services area, which is essentially the public assistance area. And we're here to talk about public assistance, and to give you an update on what's going on with public assistance, and also some COVID unwind funding that has come into our accounts already. So you may remember that we presented back in March 2023, and at that time, we said we would return to discuss how things were going. So we're here to do that today, and what we have seen, as I can give you an overview, and we're going to go into some details with this, is that there's been a significant increase, increase in needs in healthcare, but also across all programs in the public assistance areas. So we're going to talk a little bit about what that volume and need looks like, and then also discuss the funding that has already come into Stearns County. First, I'm just going to give you a quick, a quick history from what's happened since we were last here. You may recall that in, very early in the pandemic, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act came into existence, and what that act did is it had a continuous healthcare coverage requirement in it. So this meant, once a person or an individual or family landed on healthcare, they would remain covered by that law until further changes. As a result of the pandemic, many new people, individuals and families, were added to healthcare, and actually, many other assistance programs during the pandemic. And then, in December of 2022, so not quite a year ago, we had the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2023, and that was signed into law in December. One specific outcome of that is that that continuous healthcare coverage requirement was removed, and so all counties and public assistance need to go back to hand-touching in each case, and we're going to talk a little bit about that. And that started in July for us. So it's had a significant impact on our Gateway Services Division, and I have Mr. Poehler here to talk a little bit about that and give you some of the data of what's been happening, so.
Good morning. Thank you. Again, some of this is repeat from March. The national statewide increase in public assistance healthcare cases was around 28% nationwide, as well as Minnesota. During the same time, Stearns County saw a little bit more than 38% increase in healthcare cases. The current total for Stearns County healthcare cases is 23,280. That's the actual cases, which will have a direct effect on 43,340 individuals within that. So the power of that number, obviously, is more than one in four people you see on the street in your daily lives are in need of some sort of public healthcare, so, excuse Some new information and data from 2022 that we did not have in March. Going back to the public assistance programs outside of healthcare, almost all of them are seeing substantial increases. For example, here you can see our SNAP increase, which is our food support. So SNAP is Supplemental Nutrition and Assistance Program, General Assistance and Emergency Assistance. These increases are for 2022, the increase percentage is actually from a six-year average. So 2016 through 2021, things were relatively stable through all those years, including the early COVID years, and 2022 has seen that increase.
So in 2022, there's been a substantial increase in the number of cases, the number of people needing assistance across the board, and that means all of his staff are touching these cases, and you'll find out we're also touching them requirement by paper. So it's not easy.
Yeah, and for the record, 2023, we don't have data that's live, but it is, it's not going down. It's actually up a little higher in 2023 from 2022.
Just when we have those increases happening, do we automatically get the proportionate increases from assistance from the federal government on those programs? So, for example, the SNAP dollars that are coming in, are we just processing those folks, and those dollars are coming directly then from the federal government? There's no county funds that are accounting for those, that increase, correct? Those, the increases are completely covered by the federal government on the SNAP?
Yeah, this isn't county tax levy that's paying for these increases, if that's what you're asking, for the positions, however, there's a match.
Right.
Yes, so we'll talk about that at the end.
I just don't want people to think that that's always coming out of the county budget, okay?
Correct.
Yeah, and for the record, these are application numbers. So the actual case numbers, I don't have because of the time it takes to create and determine eligibility, is for, that's the time that we're spending. So once somebody's eligible and on the program, that's completely different, but this is the amount of time taken to process. Yep. So obviously, some of our challenges, talking with county partners, we meet regularly. With this unwind happening currently, we're meeting sometimes weekly and other times biweekly, so it's regularly. You know, we all realize that it's improbable that we're going to be able to keep up with the sheer volume of renewals that are coming due each month. Some of the largest challenges to get through, obviously, the obvious one, more than released to process, it's just in general. There's also more effort to complete each renewal than previously needed. As numbers have started to come in for us, DHS has made the decision to extend everybody's coverage period by an additional 30 days, and that was based on some national averages. Without getting too far into the details, what, like Melissa referenced, the consolidated appropriations, there were some states that actually started healthcare renewals when the federal law changed, which would have been May 1. Minnesota decided July 1. So there was a little bit of lag there, we had some other states that had data coming in. So that is where DHS is trying to pick up the, pick up the pieces where some other states have failed, and so therefore, they're extending some of these coverages by 30 days.
And I'll just add that there's quite a bit of confusion in the system right now. So what's happening for families is they get a letter that says that their healthcare needs to be renewed, please do it, and then a few weeks later, they get a letter from the state that says, never mind, you have extra time to do it, then they get another letter, and they're totally confused. And we're at the call volume, which we're going to highlight in a minute, is substantially increased. It's large volumes of calls and confusion as it relates to this issue.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, so like Melissa was talking about, there's created a large number of additional touches. There are, there's a pre-renewal, a renewal, you know, letters of closure, letters of not closure, I mean, people are getting a lot of mail, which is obviously creating a lot of return mail, because as you can imagine, over three years, people have a tendency to move a lot. So, so that is having a large amount of effect on staff, clerical staff, eligibility workers, and their supervisors. The last challenge, the biggest one, a large one, is there are no online options to manage eligibility, it's all done manually, and in this particular stage, it's all done on paper. So 27-page paper process that comes in, in multiple formats, and then has to be worked through our eligibility system, so.
And that's 27 pages that is not auto-filled, so families actually have to take this in the mail and actually hand-write out 27 pages.
Correct. Yep. As you can imagine, loss of coverage creates increases in uncompensated care throughout the healthcare system as well. Gaps in coverage will create barriers to accessing services such as prescription drugs, care to manage chronic conditions, immunizations, preventive screenings, mental health, and substance abuse disorder treatment.
So we are very concerned about people going without their healthcare coverage, because what will happen is people will wait until they're in the deep end services where the highest cost is, and that costs all of us taxpayers dollars, money, when people fall off their healthcare. And it's bad for families, and first and foremost, it's a terrible idea for family healthcare, so.
Yep. So due to these gaps, people will be forced to seek out the most expensive care, which is your emergency department, instead of taking preventative measures. So like Melissa said, it's not only expensive for the taxpayers, but it's devastating to those families that lose that coverage. Lastly, staff is obviously very directly impacted. We do have a really good group of people working as hard as they can, including overtime and a lot of other things, in order to process as much as this is possible in real time. They do feel a lot of pressure to make sure that help is provided. The mental health and well-being of our staff is definitely a large concern, like everyone else. The volume of work has grown exponentially past what the staff can handle currently. Phone volume has also significantly increased across all public assistance programs. As an example, in 2022, we saw a 41% increase in phone calls, which is equal to a little over 20,000 additional calls, and that's only point of contact, so, I'm sorry, point of entry. So that call comes in through the switchboard, it has to be transferred to someone else. So that 20,000 is exponential, you know, multiplied by how many times it has to be passed on.
If I can interrupt, with all those increases of phone calls, do I, do we have any numbers as far as how quick we get back, we're getting back to those?
It's a good question, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that question.
Well, no, because I have phone calls, I've had phone calls, and I've had my, and sometimes I don't get back so quick, and then I hear about that as well.
Yeah, it varies, I would say, the complicated answers vary by unit, and depending on who's having the most struggles at the time. I would say our inboxes fluctuate probably between 100, 200 voicemails. We have done a lot of new stuff in Gateway Services that probably hadn't been done in the past, as far as we've been cross-training people and making sure that we have, it's all hands on deck, to make sure that those things are being returned as fast as possible, and yet, it's still definitely a struggle.
And it's been hundreds of voicemails a day, is that, yeah, per day, is what we're getting. So it's a lot.
So we have staff from other units helping the units that are struggling, so when things are bubbling over in a unit or two, then we're pulling from other locations and doing everything we can to make sure that it doesn't build up more than that, but.
Sure, yeah. And many of those people don't know that there's hundreds in that mailbox, right?
Well, and when you're in a high time of need, you call back. And then you call back again, and so that number, you know, so, yeah, so trying to triage and make sure that we're getting to the highest priority also.
It's complicated, yeah. Another thing that happened during the legislature that surprised us a bit at the end there was $36 million came to the counties of the state of Minnesota to fund this, to help address this issue for this huge volume of public assistance applications that's actually happening across every county. And it just arrived into the inbox, basically, $1.1 million to Stearns County has already arrived. The other thing is that they put a lot of requirements around the funding, and you can only use it for staffing and technology. If you wanted to use it for technology, we don't have technology that can solve the problems that we're experiencing it. So what we're here for today is to talk about whether or not the board would like to, we have looked at our numbers and our data, and we were, we are requesting an additional eight staff, that would be public assistance positions, and they, with this $1.1 million, would be fully funded through at least the summer of 2027, so presuming we can even hire, which we will attempt, but the slower we hire, the longer this funding goes. But we're hoping to hire staff to actually help with this significant increase, which we expect in the next few years. These positions do have a federal FFP, Federal Financial Participation, funding that happens at at least 50%, and some a little more, depending upon what the role is, that pays for the other half of the position. So it's state and federal dollars that pay for these positions fully through at least the summer of 2027. The hope would be that we wouldn't need that many positions at that point in time, and at this point, what we're doing in our budget cycle is looking at these funding mechanisms... every single year on our annual budget going, okay, if we add these positions and they're supposed to be paid for by this 1.1 million, do we still, are they still working? And do we still need it? And is it still funding fully those positions? And if they're not, it would be a decision to say, even if the needs are at some point by the summer of 2027, to say either we are going to dial back on those positions because we're no longer being funded for them or we make a different decision based on what the board decides at that time. And with the workforce turnover, we do this by attrition. So nobody would be losing their jobs. And it's easy enough to do it by attrition. And I hate to say that I'm cheap. Maybe a better way to say is I'm fairly thrifty about these things. So I watch these things very closely in the human services budget. So that would be the request of the board at this time.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, this was one of the areas near the end where they actually were trying to make sure there was some resources available to be dealing with these rather significant impacts, not just on our staff, but on our constituents as well. Which was good because they, again, they put in other requirements in other places that are going to be a hardship without any resources to deal with it. And you answered my question, which had to do with the attrition. We've been hearing this for months and the staff is doing pretty incredible work and working with partners. So I'm going to move approving this request, recognizing and holding you to it that if the, after this time period, we'll have to be looking again whether it's attrition or whether there's a different need.
I would agree with that.
And I'll second that with a couple of comments and concerns. And that is, again, starting out with, with the need that we have now, especially within the medical assistance. And I can, I know that we're overwhelmed. We had a WACOSA meeting last night. And those folks that are in supervised care, they have people that have been able to help them get that medical assistance application completed. But I'm concerned about those people that might be functioning at a perhaps a lower level. And then also with our immigrant population, having those folks that now do not have the assistance. And so the only way they're not qualified or they're not qualifying, and so now they're going to emergency room or just are doing without healthcare. And so it's very important that we get those folks processed that, that do need it. And also their ability to be able to fill out the paperwork. Many of them struggle so much because of their inability with language or cognitive abilities to get that done. That being said, I very much am supportive of doing this, moving it forward. As you say, we start out with what we have. And as we process those people and the attrition, that at the end of 27, we don't have full, eight full-time employees we're going to have to be paying for. Yes.
Yeah. And Mr. Chair, my staff knows that as well. I'm a, I tell them all the time, I'm not going to come before the board and ask for something along those lines. We will have data, you know, we're definitely data-driven. So it'll be numbers and we'll, we'll keep an eye on it. I fully expect that we'll have more updates well prior to this as well. You know, as these renewals and things are happening on the healthcare side, that's not going to be 2027. We'll have further updates.
Okay. And is that 2027 a concept that we have? Or does the money end at that time? Or can we push it into 2028, 2029?
If that, Mr. Chair Commissioners, that would be when the funding ends, if we hired by the end of the year and we had the staff in place. And then with the FFP, the federal MASH. So we, we had our finance people check, see when the funding ends.
Mr. Chair, we have this money in hand. We can spread it out as long as we want.
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's, yeah, that's my question.
Thank you for that clarification. That is correct. The money is here and we have to use it on staffing or technology. Otherwise, we just return it and the other counties can share it.
Okay.
It's a one-time funding.
Yeah, it's just, it's just this.
Commissioner Lenzma, you got a question?
Yeah, the, this is not going to be a complete solution, but a partial solution on folks that are struggling with paperwork. The law library folks just inside the east door at the courthouse do get involved in some of that. There's only two people in there. So I mean, they can't stand the, serve the thundering herd. But the reality is there are some, they're getting pretty familiar since COVID with those types of processes. They had a familiarity beforehand, but COVID really screwed things up. It's better now. But just drop in there sometime and there's only, yeah, there's only two people to talk to. But it merits, merits a chat.
Quick question. Given we're one of less than five states or three states that are doing paper only, and there's been a lot of pushback to the commissioner at DHS, are you starting to hear anything more about either phone or the fill-in, the online? Just so I know to go with pushback again.
The last update that I had, the online version has been delayed just because of the complexity of it. That being said, we are working with vendors to, we're talking about technology and personnel here. But so we're using technology and pushing that in every corner we can as well. Some of our state systems are older and more antiquated. So it's harder and takes a lot longer to do something. So that's probably where our downfall will be in this timeframe. But we do have some good vendors and partnerships across the state. And the counties are doing a good job of working together to make sure that there are newer and more options to hopefully at least help the high functioning that can, for instance, use an application instead of paper. It won't be an application for the healthcare renewal, but it'll be able to, so, sorry, stammering.
This is an area that members, we can be pushing back at DHS too. And part of the challenge has been throughout COVID, and this is where the paper piece is a challenge. Throughout COVID, people kept getting things in the mail that said, you can ignore all this. You can ignore all this. You could ignore all this, including from the state. And now they're putting like little blue dots on things and thinking people will open them. And I don't know about all of you, but we used to get mostly junk mail at home. So the outreach piece has been a challenge with community partners, the county, the state, and the state hasn't necessarily been making those easier. So please thank staff because they're really having to do some incredible work.
I think Commissioner Bertram.
Mr. Chairman, so how many people are in the office of your, what do you have, 200?
In this division, you mean? In the entire department, it's 400, a little over 400.
How many of the 400 are in offices?
It varies depending upon the division because many of the workers in different divisions, the most are works in the community. But we have quite a bit of activity, to the point we almost have a space issue out on the service center, particularly with his staff going in and out. But we also have public health going in and out, social workers, corrections. The only division that really hasn't been as much in and out is our finance and technology division. And I think they're 95% introverts and would see that as a punishment if I force them in the office. But I have, we've been doing the full hybrid. We go where the work is needed and we have a lot of staff going in and out of the buildings.
Because, Mr. Chairman, I guess I've been hearing, you know, hard to make appointments, get appointments, hard to, you know, have interaction, one-on-one interaction. So I wasn't sure how many were in the office, how many, you know, that kind of, and then these positions. So if I do the math, it'd be like $35,000 positions over the four-year period? Or did I do that?
No, no, you have to double that because this is the, 1.1 would be the county, where what the state part of it is. The Fed's already put in another 50%.
So they're $60,000 positions.
I actually would have to look up the exact, because we figure it in with benefits and I can send that to you. We have that figured out. Like we have our finance area figure out exactly how much it is. And if we hired the eight and when and how long the funding would last with the FFP.
And Mr. Chairman, the reason I ask it is that they're coming in new. How does that compare to with current? And of course, what potential issues does that create in creating these positions? Obviously, the whole weight study stuff and everything, how does that play into it? I'm sure somebody thought that through.
Yeah, yeah, we did. Thank you. Mr. Chair Commissioners, what we did for the guestimate of this is a pretty close financial analysis of it. We usually go to the middle of the pay range, pay scale. But for the most part, we've been hiring, in his division, most of your staff have been new workers to the field. So they're, they could, the funding could even last longer in that case. And we watched that. Is that, did that answer your question? Okay, all right.
And since I've been paying attention, the amount of spending of the county budget in just 2%, I mean, just two departments. And it would be the sheriff's department and social services has ping ponged back and forth over the years between 61% to 65% total budget, those two departments. And inside of that, the biggest single expenditure category, I think, still is in Melissa's department is seniors in nursing homes. So we really get into slicing and dicing. The, we would get more issues and complaints on seniors in nursing homes. But if you, if you go, if you visit those places and take a look around, most recently, I did five to six days in one of those places recovering from my knee replacement. Yeah, these are people that can't take care of themselves anymore. And it's a reality. And I learned a lot that I didn't anticipate becoming any expertise in, in that recovery.
Melissa, one concern, I've had a couple of phone calls from some of the community leaders from our immigrant population. And they've been a little bit frustrated in that they've been doing a lot of the advocacy work that they were hoping that the county was going to be doing. Now, this would also help alleviate some of that because some of the folks, they have, they do not have the ability to fill out that paperwork themselves. And so they, they felt that maybe we should be, you know, giving them greater assistance. In my understanding, that that will probably then be happening with this.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that should help with all, like the one in four people in Stearns County who are needing assistance. Part of the issue that you're, that I would guess that you're hearing from the immigrant community is that, that it always works better if you have a trusted community member helping you out, doing the go-between. And so a number of, we've tried even through, I think, our ARPA dollars. We have funded navigators and different kinds of approaches to help with that, to do, to bridge that gap. We can't hand over though the role. And that is, that's not our roles, that's state and federal laws. We can't hand over the role of them suddenly doing the work. And so it's, yeah, that, whether or not the board would like to fund further navigators and doing that trusted community person. And we do a lot of community engagement in human services to try to bridge that gap. And always we can improve and always we, there's work to be done in that area.
Okay.
Might could be a role for senior centers.
Yeah. Yeah. But we can't hand over the function and the eligibility part. That has to be done by county staff.
Absolutely.
And as I indicated, there's just two people there, law library, maybe, maybe, maybe.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on that. Go ahead and call the question on this appropriation of funding. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion passed.
Thank you so much. We'll be back to give you an update.
How does this tie in then to our final budget motion?
I think this is totally separate. This is for those eight positions that we're going to be using.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, actually, in the original budget request, there was a couple of, there was a request for two eligibility specialists. And so we removed those out of the regular budget. We funded it with this dollar. So it does integrate in. And then next year, you'll see this amount of employees in the budget, but they'll be funded with these dollars. So it's part, but it's, you know, easily separated because it's fully funded.
Yeah. My concern was we were confusing the issue by making a motion to accept this. And then it could conceivably collide with our final.
Okay.
So.
Thank you so much.
Mark and Shelley. Mark, I apologize for having you sit back there. It's been a long morning for you, as now it's afternoon.
You're tougher than you look, Mark.
Thanks.
At your, at your meeting on July 11th, I think it was, the board requested that we take a second look at the Household Hazardous Waste Program. And so that's what you're about to see is, is how that program can be expanded.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Mark Lateral Environmental Services with me is my director, Shelley Benson.
Thank you, Mark.
As.
We'll just let Mark do it. He's good.
As Dr. Williams indicated, I'm here to go through information regarding the waste programs the county has. We'll flip through the PowerPoint. You may recognize some of the slides from the discussion we had six, eight weeks ago. And then the back half of the presentation will kind of outline a plan in which we believe the programs could take moving forward. So for the benefit of the public listening, Stearns County does operate a household hazardous waste program. And it's, the facility is located at 3601 Fifth Street South in Wake Park. Questions or concerns can be phoned into the office at the 320257-8605 number. We are there Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:15 PM. And then we are also there on the second and third Saturdays of each month from 8:00 to noon. We have five staff that currently operate the facility. We have an office specialist, Paul Sexton. We have three HHW staff, Ryan Thompson, Michael Rogers and Jacob Anderson. And then also our solid waste officer, Tim Oswald helps out and offices out of the facility as well. So what do we do out there? Well, given some statistical analysis, looking back at a six-year facility use stats, you can see that over the years, we serve roughly, there's roughly 10,000 cars that come through the facility each year. All those are combination of Stearns County residents and obviously our neighboring county partners. And you can see the breakout there in the top chart. The bottom chart indicates then car counts over the last six years as well. And you'll see that Mondays and Fridays tend to be the most used days of the week that we have the facility open and staffed. The next slide here just shows some charts with values. The top left corner there shows that over the last, in 2022, over the mobile participation numbers, we had, or 930 folks come through the mobile events that we held. We had 9,350 cars through the facility. We've managed almost 550,000 pounds of waste in 2022. You can look through the rest of the charts, but we hit, we recycled almost 26,000 light bulbs, 34,000 gallons of latex paint, 77, almost 78,000 pounds of flammable products and, you know, near 42,680 pounds of pesticides. So the staff we have out there have been busy.
Mark, just quickly, those light bulbs, why are those light bulbs still being recycled? You'd think that there would be with the LEDs, that actually, you know, the fluorescent ones should be dropping off, but they're not.
Well, they're still out there. There's a number of chicken barns, turkey barn, you know, there's a lot of the egg community that has light bulbs.
Are they replacing it? I mean, they must still be using the fluorescents or?
They use the fluorescents, but we are seeing replacements into the LEDs. Yep. So looking at a wider spectrum, then, looking at 10-year statistical analysis, we can look at kind of those same categories. And what I want to point out then as, or the 10-year period is, you know, we've had over 87,000 people come, or cars come through our facility in Wake Park. Staff have processed over 4.6 million pounds of waste. And then you can run down the list on the right-hand column there. You know, 253,000 gallons of latex paint, 606,000 pounds of flammable products and 346,000 pounds of pesticides, along with the other statistics there. The county also does operate a mobile waste unit. We, in '23, we did do, or we are conducting nine in-county events. We have five out-of-county events with our partner counties. The listing is out on our website. Keys to holding household hazardous waste, mobile collections, is we need space. We need to be set up on an impervious surface, so we can't do it on gravel lots. And then other, other benefits are the ability to manage traffic. You know, obviously having the approval of the property owner and then community cooperation and planning for the scheduling of those events. And you can see that's, that's the, that's our mobile unit there, spread out in a collection. This map just shows the nine in-county events that are being held in '23. That we do have a listing there at the bottom, St. Stephen, Belgrade, Bruton, Padawan, Nick, St. Nick, that we do sprinkle in every other year as additional stops. But the numbers don't justify us going there each year. Looking at, from a statewide perspective, there are 38 HHW facilities in Minnesota. There are 15 standalone facilities, which I will call ours a standalone facility. There are 23 that operate out of a combined location, either with like a landfill or a MRF or some sort of recycling center. Of those facilities, the 12 most active in 2021 are listed there with Hennepin all the way down through Winona. Looking at statistics for those, this, this slide will point out their, the top 12 daily operations, when they're there and the timeframes that they operate. Again, looking at some of those comparisons, you can see that who, who operates as a standalone facility, who's, who's attached to a MRF. You can look at the annual hours of operation on a comparative analysis there. Look at the number of full-time employees each, each facility employs, the amount of waste that they're handling, and how many participants are coming through their facility.
Mark, on that one, Otter Tail, I mean, that's a small county. How, are they drawing from all, regionally? How is it that they're, I mean, you take a look at their numbers, you know, they have got very limited amount of population-sized communities, but yet they're drawing on it. Something doesn't quite seem to be right on that.
Otter Tail?
Yeah.
Otter Tail is a small county?
Well, by population.
They belong to MICA.
Yeah.
You know, they, they have, and that's a local decision, so, in their minds.
Like, well, I'm just looking at, like, the users, 6,400 users and we've got 85.
Lots of lake people.
Could be, yeah.
Oh, yeah, huge lake area.
That could, that could be it, yeah.
Okay, moving on then. Another way to look at those statistics is when you look at user participation. Based on those 12, Stearns County comes in at number seven. We are third in out-state facilities. The other, the other four there are metro county facilities. We rank third in the number of annual hours that were provided for the public to participate. We come in fourth in the amount of waste that's handled in those facilities, only behind Whistledee out of Duluth for out-state facilities. But when you look at the number of employees, we come in at number eight. So what it's telling me is we're doing a lot of work with not as many people. So looking at the future of our waste programs, then, we've heard goals expressed, and, and what we've identified as goals are the, a greater create, a greater utilization of our mobile collection unit, increased availability of the facility to the public, and then also a greater convenience to the public in waste disposal options. So keeping those in mind, we've kind of charted out a pathway on, on what may lead us to those goals. So our vision for the mobile collection unit would be then to look to increase up to 30 cities or town sites to host mobile events over a 25-week summer season, basically. We would look to create mobile, weekly mobile collections on Wednesdays, just call them Mobile Wednesdays, running a collection from maybe midday into early evening. Some of those off-hours, let people get done with work and still participate into an early evening. We'd also look then to continue participation in the five out-of-county events with our partner counties. So that would be a, a very large increase in the mobile collection. This map shows two things, really. The green arrows show the communities that we do serve already in our, our annual or every other year collection series. The yellow tags will show 30 communities that we've identified where maybe we would then continue or expand to. We would contact them and say, are, do you want us to come? You know, is there a site that we can set up in and, and participate in your community? So those, those have been identified as 30 potential locations. Obviously, we, the red flag is the facility in Wake Park, and we still would maintain a buffer around the facility in Wake Park, expecting more local folks to come to Wake Park rather than come to a mobile unit two miles from the facility, kind of a thing, so. We would continue to look to work with our, our partner counties. And like I said, we did five of them, and we historically have done five. We do two in Malax County and Malacca and Wakan. We do one with Benton County out in Foley. And then we participate in two Sherburne County events in Santiago and in Clear Lake communities, so. Looking to then address the second goal of an increased availability of the facility, we could look to expand the operational hours at the facility. A proposal that we've come up with is a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday schedule from an 8:00 to a 6:30 timeframe. We would retain the 8:00 to 4:15 timeframe on Wednesdays, do the mobile collection that we would be implementing. And then also, we would look to add a third Saturday, an 8:00 to noon timeframe on a third Saturday, the fourth Saturday of the month, to increase hours. We'd look to create a split shift workforce that would then allow us to do that more than eight-hour work shift, and would also allow us to create that mobile unit crew and that we would put out on the road. Looking at implementing a schedule such as this, it would, looking at the calendar, it would have afforded us about 38 more operational hours this past July. And then when you calculate that all out, it, it increases to about 450 hours a year, which then, when you add it back to the operational hours and comparisons of the 12, would make us the most available facility in the state by operational hours, so. The third goal that was identified is making it a greater convenience in waste disposal options. In order to do this, we're going to need to grow our programs. We're going to need to grow specifically the solid waste program. We could look to meet the needs of disposal for e-waste, maybe tires, appliances, other problem items, you know, I've listed styrofoam, plastic bags, bulkier items. We could look to address some of that stuff. We could also look to provide greater opportunities for our VSQG partners, which is our very small quantity generator business partners. Those are not residents, but those are businesses, commercial partners. But in order to do this, we're, we're going to need to look at a campus or a facility expansion. This is a concept that was put together, I put this together, of what possible expansion could look like out at the facility. We already own the land. We could look at putting up a second building in which we could then look to address receiving those other waste forms, adding a second drive-through to the existing business so that we can better serve our VSQG partners. Right now, we serve them out front in the parking lot, which is not very conducive in bad weather conditions. We need to have another drive-through lot in which we can have them come in and, and be serviced, but not yet hold up the residential flow of, of the community coming to the facility. The expansion also would then address larger county storage needs, which I assume you're all aware that there are, so. What do we need to get to these goals? EST is projecting a three, an additional three staff increase in HHW technicians or specialists. Again, this would allow us to create the split shift creation in the work hours. It'd also afford us to create that mobile unit crew and put them on the road each week. What is that going to cost? Well, an estimated cost for the salaries of three staff is about $297,000. We're going to throw about $15,000 of training on top of that. So staffing alone is, you know, excuse me, will be close to that $300,000 value.
Mark, if we can back up, when you talked earlier about increase in the hours, what were the hours of increase you talked about before?
We looked at going fro, or proposing a increase of hours on a schedule that would reflect a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday from 8:00 to 6:30.
Right.
So we would run a split shift from the 8:00 to 4:15, our, our standard work shift, and we'd start at like a 10:00 to 6:30 shift.
Right. But, but you also, is, the number of hours we would be increasing per week would be how much?
About 38.
So then, that's, that's why I'm confused about the three FTEs. If that was 38 hours increase, wouldn't that be one FTE?
No, in order to do the increased workload, you have to have a split shift. So, and, and then we run at the facility, we have a policy of having two people at the facility at all times for safety reasons. And so it, that's, that's the proposal we're coming, coming with is a increase of three staff.
Well, it's not just the, not just the hours of operation, it's the mobile unit as well.
Correct, right. Because, yeah, on the Wednesdays, I need the crew, I need to be able to run the facility from 8:00 to 4:15. But I also need to send a group out on the road from noon to 6:30. And I can't have the same staff doing both jobs at one time.
Yeah, I, I, I see that.
And so the only way we can achieve that is more hands to do the work.
Okay. But, but we don't have them on the road the other days.
Correct.
It still takes, it still takes us the ability to have the numbers within those hours as well as covering those additional mobile hours. There's a lot of transport that we also do. So when we are running loads to Pope Douglas or to other places, then those people aren't at the facility. If they're doing a pharmaceutical run, if they're doing other operational things. So that, are, those are people that wouldn't be at the facility, so we have to have other people to cover those hours as well.
Okay.
So, Chair, so I think what I'm hearing you say is that if we're increasing hours and, and locations, but hours, it will not only generate the additional hours, but more work to go process all of the items or, or deliver them. Is that part of what you're saying?
Mr. Chair Commissioner Clark, right. Obviously, if we're out there, we have more hours of operation, we're doing more collections. We'd be, ideally, we're collecting more waste. More waste leads to more work for processing and disposal, so.
So a question, Mr. Chair, that I have without getting way in the weeds and maybe off of, it's a question, not anything else, because as a board, we don't tell you when to be having staff working, but have you all considered not having one of the weekday hours and having every Saturday all day? That might actually, because part of the, the challenge, I think, that certainly Mr. Chair has brought up over and over, is it's confusing about what Saturdays it's open and when. And looking at the numbers, it's not really comparable because it's two Saturdays, part days. So that's a question I have.
Commissioner Clark, I agree, you know, I do see, Hennepin County does that, Olmsted County does that. A number of the other counties are doing, are doing that. I don't know about being closed then on one day of the week. Looks like they're doing Monday.
Well, yeah, I was just curious, given the, the hours, sorry, Mr. Chair, and, and if we were trying to do cost savings, I mean, I know.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, one of the, one of the struggles is when you look at a lot of those facilities back on packet page 106, you're going to see a lot of those comparisons. Those are standalone versus not standalone facilities. Otter Tail's attached to a MRF, so they have those, those folks. Pope Douglas also. So it's, it's, if we wiped out all the attached ones, you're going to see that, that the hours of operation, it, it looks, it looks a little differently. So the other part of this is that when we look at facilities being open, when do people come? Right now, they tend to be Mondays and Fridays. So would they, would they come on a Saturday? Often, we're, we're not sure if they would come on a Saturday or not. We're not seeing a, a demand for Saturdays, and we're not hearing a demand for Saturdays, at least by phone calls or requests from the public to us directly. That doesn't mean you haven't heard some of that. What I'm hearing is, I, we haven't heard it directly from the public. That doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So if we wanted to add some additional hours, we certainly could do that by switching and shifting. We did try to do some of that shifting a couple of years ago, and it, we didn't have anybody showing up. So we kind of reverted back to the regular hours. And that was probably in 2014, I believe, when we had originally started to add additional hours based on the fact that we had incorporated tri-county service into that facility. So we had a few extra hours. And then there are additional costs, I believe is what Mark, Mark was looking at, and that would be on packet page 217, the facilities. If we would build at least $3 million to build a secondary building, you do have to remember that the money that we have is, would be available through the solid waste service fee dollars. So we have those dollars already there. And those are non-levee dollars. And then there are additional impacts, increased disposal, packet page 118, disposal costs, supply costs, fuel, and, and the additional needs that we have listed.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, thank you for accommodating additional hours, different hours, Saturdays. I think any business will tell you this, if they're open from, you know, if they're normally open from 8:00 to 5:00, and/or they, then they suddenly, restaurants change, they close at 2:00. It takes a while for people to figure this out, and then they get into that pattern of coming to the restaurant before 2:00 or after 2:00. So some of that might be a little bit in waiting, so, but thank you for accommodating that. I would assume you're fully open now, because there was a period of time, you only allowed one car to come in at a time and all that. Are we beyond all that now?
Mr. Chair Commissioner Bertram, actually, the facility, when, okay, so when COVID took over the world and everybody shut down, I think the facility maybe was shut down in its entirety in maybe a week or two weeks. And then in short order, actually, staff were brought back in. The facility was back open. We changed our protocols on how we assisted our clients, meaning, you know, waste needed to be in the rear of the vehicle, customers needed to stay in their cars, all that kind of stuff. Masks had to be worn, those kind of precautionary things. But I, ultimately, it was a very short period in which we actually didn't do any collections, so.
But, Mr. Chairman, we're wide open now?
We are full open, full go, yep.
And I might be missing something, Mr. Chairman, but that three staff people, am I doing something wrong? That's 98,000 a staff position?
That's, that would be salaries and benefits, correct. Looking at the pay grade and using the 24-pay grid at a step B, we calculated that out with those values. Looking at the last staff that was hired in the position.
Benefits are normally like 15,000, 20,000, so that, I mean, that's a $70,000 position?
Correct.
Wow. And then, you know, the, the, most people, in my opinion, most people like to bring this stuff at cleanups with the mobile unit. So that, that's when your use is probably the highest. This is a once-or-twice kind of year stuff that I've seen, you know, they, unless they're really bored, they're not bringing in stuff in every week. You know, they're doing it twice a year when they're cleaning, typically in the spring and the fall. You know, when you got the cleanups, that's what people normally do. So it's a once-or-twice-a-year kind of a thing. And in conjunction with cleanups with your mobile units, you'll never beat that. That, that's your, that's your best time of, of being there. But with your visits, the 87,000 over 10 years, I mean, that, there's always two ways to do things, to reduce it to the ridiculous or to expand it to the, you know, overwhelming. That's four. That's four a day. I mean, that's reasonable. I mean, I'm sorry, four an hour. Four visits an hour is not unreasonable, or 33 a day. I mean, you got an eight-hour, nine-hour workday. So I mean, that's pretty, that's good. And again, what we're trying to accomplish is get the stuff out of the garbage stream, out of the ditch, out of places it shouldn't go to. So and my point is, it's not a criticism or any, but it just sounds really exorbitant, 87,000 over 10 years. But it's four an hour, 33 a day on average, 167 a week. Again, that's all very reasonable. Any business that's open, if you wouldn't be getting that kind of customers coming in, you'd be broke. I mean, you'd be you wouldn't be serving the public. So that's not bad. That's a great number. It's reasonable management. I and when you see you have the SCORE funds available, Mr. Chairman, remember SCORE was now I feel like Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I was there when we did this. We created SCORE, the tax to create markets for the recyclables. It wasn't created originally, and again, I was there. Director Benson wants to say something? I'll go ahead, Director Benson.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, the one of the things we're talking about staffing would be utilization of the environmental service fee dollars. Those are the dollars, not the SCORE dollars necessarily for these types of increases.
Mr. Chairman, the building, I think you referred to.
Environmental service fee dollars.
And that's the 8%?
And that's the 8%, yes.
I was getting there, but thank you. So the SCORE dollars are 17%, that's the state average SCORE dollar. Those monies were supposed to be used to create markets. The only thing that's left that I know of of that creation of markets for recyclables is Master Mark Avon Plastics in Panzo. That's the one business that's left yet that took and takes plastic and recycles it into decking. But right now, the cardboard is at an all-time low. I mean, we've got dire need of reinvigorating the recycling market because we tell everybody recycle and there's no place to take. And so that that's we we shouldn't confuse, you know, using those dollars for something else, in my opinion. Plus, Stearns County is only one of two counties that adds on to that 17% tax in the immediate area. And we add on 8%. It used to be 10%, you lowered it to 8%. And so, you know, again, good or bad, that's where that's coming from. I personally would not be in favor of expansion of the building or anything else. I'm open to doing the three employees, expanding the hours, utilizing with what we have. If we need storage facilities or something, that's something that Kevin and others can deal with in other places. We shouldn't confuse, in my opinion, that with this. So I I'm not opposed to the three positions. 70,000 plus is a lot, I think, for that position, but it is what it is. And the hours are great, but I would not support the the expansion of the facility.
Mr. Chair, this for information only, correct? I mean, we're not really looking at requesting.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, I'm just here to present the information today.
Yeah, the board, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, the board asked for asked for some information on how we might be able to expand this. This this is not in the budget that you're
Correct.
being presented next at your next meeting. It's but it certainly can be incorporated. So if we had some direction, we would begin to make those adjustments.
And just a clarification, it was it's $8 versus $10, not percent, right?
It depends on if you're a commercial or a residential, so commercial is 8% and residential is $8.
Right, that's what most people see as the $8.
Correct, yes.
Just a follow-up to that is under what number one, they see the $8, Commissioner Notch, but they feel the seven, the 25%. Because when commercial, trust me, when commercial pays 25%, the customer's paying 25%. It gets passed on. So they may see the eight, but they feel the 25%. And again, other counties don't charge that, but that's what we've decided to do. And then the the other point is on the you're not asking for something. I get that, okay, Director Benson's confused. Go ahead, ask your question.
No, I was related to 25%. We're 8% commercial.
Correct, but when you add it to this, Mr. Chairman, Director Benson, when you add the eight to the 17, it's 25%.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Thank you.
And all what people care about is when they look at the bottom of their tax, it's 25% in Stearns County on commercial.
I hear what you're saying, yes.
And then, of course, you have the property assessment, which I can't remember what that is, $50?
Eight, the $8 or 16?
The parcel.
Oh.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, the environmental service fee has a $8 per year assessment on residential lots. It has an 8% value on commercial accounts. That's what the environmental service fee values are.
And maybe you can just explain that to all of us, what that breakdown is on both. But I guess the point, the real point that I'm making is, again, you're not asking for the building and everything. But I've been around here long enough now, at eight months, to know that when this gets dropped, the next thing we know, it's going to be on the agenda, and it's going to be a $3 million request to build a building. So I'm just trying to stay ahead of it. This is the second time I've heard that potential. And that's why I thought I'd share my opinion. I'm opposed to doing another building or an expansion of this until we get this all figured out. So that's why I'm trying to be proactive and not just react to something being on the agenda. So I apologize if I confused somebody.
I know.
Mark, do you want to proceed with the rest of it or?
Yeah, yeah, by all by all means.
I thought we were done.
Okay, yeah.
Shelley did kind of run through the last part of it already.
Yeah.
Well, she, yeah.
If you want to just kind of skip toward the end of the.
There, yeah, I guess the the quick and easy is along with the staff that we laid out some equipment needs that we wouldn't be asking for and put values to those as well. Yes, we did lay a $3 million value to a building expansion here to grow the programs. Other impacts that do, you have to be recognized growing the program also means you're handling more waste. There's more waste disposal, there's more supply needs costs to handle the waste. There's increased fuel, the vehicle maintenance, you know, all those things go along with that. So it's not just a billing or staffing cost. You can look at this other program considerations. One thing to keep in mind, one of our partners, Shuren County, has been becoming more vocal about building their own HHW facility. If they do that, do we continue to be a partner with them? Do we continue to do mobile collections with them? Do their do their residents continue to come here versus go to their collection site, which is anticipated to be in Becker? Along with that, then, if we look to the three staff people, I also have to keep in mind staff retention. Three of my staff will drive right past that new facility. Will they want to continue to come here or will they want to stop in Becker? Those are all parts of the puzzle. Just neither good nor bad, they're just realities, and I think they need to be addressed. So looking at the short-term summary on this, additional staff will allow the county to reach the customer service goal. It did, like I stated before, the 35, the additional hours that we put out there will give 35 more facility hours a week, 420 a year. Add that on, it would make us the most available facility based on those details before. Increased collections will will result in increased costs. As I just said, the solid waste fee or solid waste fund is is available right now to absorb the additional workload and the costs at this time. Authorizing a plan such at this such as this will accomplish the goals of increasing customer service. In the long term, adding an additional buildings to the HHW site will enable the county to expand its programming to collect more types of hazardous waste and solubilous materials, keeping them out of the landfills. It creates a one-stop shop for citizens looking to accomplish the proper waste disposal. And the solid, again, the solid waste fund can be used to fund the development of this building. Those are all dollars that we have in our pockets today. Authorizing a long-term plan will increase the value of the HHW site to the community as a at large in impact of the waste stream. So I believe that's the end of the slides. So any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, I've got I've got a couple of things. First of all, Mark, Shelley, thank you. This really, this, you know, I've been concerned about this for a number of years. And I think the public has a need for it. And we're going to be meeting that need a little bit better, and I really appreciate that effort. So so thank you very much on this. One thing I'm concerned about would be the Saturdays. I guess if if we're going to have a Saturday morning only, I guess I would like to see if we could find it would be every Saturday. Because when you have one Saturday that you're not open, that just confuses people. Well, they weren't open, they're discouraged. If they know it's going to be Saturday, they'll be there on Saturday. And I would hope that saying, you know, you're not going to be open the 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 first Saturday. Well, then sometimes you even have five Saturdays on a on a month, and that even makes it more confusing. So that would be one adjustment I make. The other thing is, I've had the idea about also utilizing our county fair. And I wouldn't mind even even if Stearns County would be one of those advocates that we would, one of our collection days would be Saturday at the fair or Friday at the fair, and we would advertise that. And it would be, we we could figure out how to do that and make it a promotion because I do think, again, it would be just unnatural because everybody knows when that date is and they're going to be there. And whether it's just a paint collection or you want to do all hazardous. But but I I think having that available could be a promotion and could have a huge impact. So I would I would hope that maybe we could incorporate one of the cleanup days or drop-off days could be one of the days at the fair. So I'm just going to include that. And and we might even be able to.
How does that work?
Well, how does that work? We talked about that before, Lee.
No, I mean, you're asking people to bring stuff on to the fair.
No, no, not well, they would, they, okay, we have the site right next to it, the public worksite, right next to the fairgrounds. They could drop it off there. Or they could, we could use the one.
Yeah, I can just imagine people dragging garbage.
No, 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 that's not. No, no, no. No, it would be on their visit, so on their way. But anyway, that that's one thing. And again, I don't know if we need to take action on anything today, but we got a lot of information, the things to think about. And I appreciate your efforts in 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 following through on that, so thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Mike, we have one more.
One more is the capital improvement plan projects update and and actually a request for action there too. And there you are, I'm here. Thank you.
I'm the last thing keeping you between your late lunch and staying here long.
Steve, before you finish, Ben, I see you're in the audience. Were you going to be speaking today? Okay, could you just hang or don't leave until we adjourn? All right.
Does that mean you're asking not to eat?
Good afternoon.
All right.
I'm back here again. As Dr. Williams said, I'm here to talk about the capital improvement plan. I do have Kevin and Ben from Facilities and Parks in case there are detailed questions regarding any of the particular items. And while the people in the back are swapping out the PowerPoint so that I can talk intelligently, I will just mention that, again, we bring the list of capital projects to the board on an annual basis. One is part of a way to let the public know what our public capital investment plan is looking like for our buildings and our facilities, as well as to make sure the board is aware of what projects we're on and what the time scale is. And I think they have me ready. Okay, good. So in brief, and I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible. What is a capital improvement plan? Again, it's a way for us to, as a organization, plan over a long-term period what our capital needs are. Obviously, you've all been in lots of work sessions related to the Justice Center, so you're you're aware of of how that works to try to forecast long-term needs. It's how we, as a staff, look to make sure we can maintain our current buildings. We have 34 different buildings from tower sites to, you know, this building here to keep all the systems that it takes to make those buildings operate effectively, continue to maintain what we need, to preserve and extend the life of buildings as as much as we can. And of course, to coordinate and make sure that we're not spending too much money in any one given year, that it's going to be a detrimental impact to the taxpayers. That's one of our key key things. So how we use a capital improvement plan is, again, to make sure that we're utilizing all of the space we have in as efficient of a manner as possible to make sure that those buildings are maintained, that they look and operate effectively. We, Kevin and his staff, do a terrific job of making sure that our buildings are are maintained and all the systems are up to date and operating well. Again, working with the auditor's office to make sure that we have a debt plan that is favorable for the county operations and for the taxpayers. Again, in 2023, the county became debt-free for the first time since I've been working here in 25 years. And again, that's through the efforts of the board, working with staff in the auditor's office to make sure that we can do everything we do to maintain our buildings as as well as possible. And of course, to support the goals of the board, to support the comprehensive plan in terms of parks, they're working on the parks master plan, so that's where a lot of their goals come from, to make sure we're we're in sync with that. In terms of financial goals, again, we always try to make sure that the levy is the revenue source of last resort. So if we can find grants, funding from state or other federal options, or again, as we're talking about with the Justice Center, to look at a sales tax as an alternative to utilizing property tax, which is, again, one of the most progressive forms of revenue that government has available. And again, wanting to make sure that the timing of the projects and the timing of the financing is done in such a way as to make it possible that, again, there's as little impact on the individual taxpayers as possible in accomplishing all of these goals. So our major projects, there are no new projects on the docket for this year. Every all the projects that are on the list were already authorized by the board in past years. The projects that are on here again now are, again, looking at the Judicial Center, which, of course, we've had discussions on. For parks, it's the development of the Wildwood Park and any new park acquisition in the next several years. And in administration, it's remodel of this building. And you just had a discussion on HHW, some improvements in highway and the ring road around downtown campus. So this schedule looks at what is currently on the docket. And again, there are no new projects. Several projects have been pushed back, and several of them have been pushed back for several years because it just hasn't been the right time to actually launch the project. But they've been on our list as something, again, to inform the board and the public about that it's something that's been on the radar for the past several years. So again, the park projects for Wildwood have been pushed back another year so that they're now looking at going between 2024 and 2027. The park acquisition, again, is something we keep moving forward for those times when, you know, property comes up because you can't always predict exactly when property becomes available. The HHW expansion is something that has been on the radar for several years. And again, I keep pushing that one back until at some time. The board has consensus on on what our plan is there. Again, the ones I want to highlight your attention on, again, is the highway HVAC replacement in the salt dome. Those two projects are critical, and we are going to need to start working on those this fall. I like to break down the projects based on the type of projects they are. So again, you can see on the left the name of the project and then the the project number, which indicates the year that the project was first approved by the board. It had to be put on the schedule, and on this slide, I've decided to put the funding source for the different projects. So you can see, again, we're not looking at going out for bonding. We're trying to do all of these projects through existing revenue sources, either project fund or sales tax or some other funding source. So again, the first one is the administration center remodel pre-COVID. We had a plan, we had architect drawings already lined up, and we were ready to go with actually redoing most of the floors of this building for how we thought we were going to use the building in 2019. And then COVID happened. And certainly, we we've learned a lot since then. But this building still is in need of some remodeling. Again, part of this is dependent on on what happens with the Justice Center and where that all lands. But we are going to do some have some needs in terms of security, some mechanical systems, and just efficiency of this building that we're going to need to work on in in the future. And I have the Justice Center that was first authorized by the board in 2019 as well. The dollar amount I have on here is the modal or the the dollar amount that you see is closest to all the other options. Again, we have seven options that the board's been looked at with a wide range of prices. And the the amount in the plan is based on the numbers that show up the most often. And again, the HHW facility is is you just had that discussion. It was something that was added to the project plan in 2022. Again, I'm just pushing it forward another year, again, until such time as the department and and the board have agreed that it's time to make that call. In terms of maintenance projects, these are not, you know, whole system redesigns or not building a new building, but just upgrading some of the mechanical or or. but just upgrading some of the mechanical or auxiliary systems. The highways shop system in Wait Park, that HVAC system is, I believe, original to the building. Some, and that dates to the early 1980s, and that system is past its useful life. And so we do need to do a replacement of the HVAC system out there and an expansion of it, and that'll cost about $850,000, is our estimate. And then the salt dome at the Wait Park shop is past its useful life. The roof is in need of being completely replaced, and the current dome doesn't meet the operational needs of the department. And so a new dome would be better able to be utilized by the department, question.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, so is that like a new design concept then, from what the domes were?
I'll defer to Kevin on that one.
Commissioner Persky, Commissioner Notch, that the salt dome that's there now is in need of some structural repair and a new roof, and it is just a single compartment style. So with the way that highway is operating, having different types of materials for different temperatures and different mixtures and salt reduction and all of that, it makes more operational sense for them to have a building, think hoop-style building, that they can move bunkers and adjust sizes and things like that. That project, in addition to the salt dome, also addresses much of the back lot of the Wait Park Highway Shop. If you've driven back there, it's a combination of busted asphalt and dirt. So we're looking to address several drainage problems, containment problems. We have salt runoff that needs to be addressed, those kinds of things. So salt dome is a part of it, but it is a bigger scope, so.
Sure. Thanks.
Okay. All right. The next slide is looking at Parks projects. Again, these have been pushed back another year. Wildwood Development Phases One and Two were first authorized by the board in 2019. Again, we are looking at outside funding for half of this, and then the other half would come out of the project fund. And Parks acquisition, again, we've kept $650,000 in there from the project fund when or if those opportunities should appear, and that was first authorized last year in 2022. Lastly, is just what we call a security project. Again, in 2019, as we were doing this, we have two buildings in our downtown campus that have some significant security gaps in terms of if it wouldn't be hard for people to drive a car into them or other things. We have done some measures, and Kevin did bring some boulders from Quarry Park, so thanks to Ben for that to help. But again, part of the issue is, again, as we learn through the judicial study process, there's supposed to be larger barriers and distances than what we currently have. And so again, we're looking to remove the ring road around the courthouse for the portion that we own and redo that for a more seamless downtown campus look and feel for how it looks in between the buildings, and that's about $750,000. Those are the projects. Again, there are no new ones. Everything is on here that was here in previous years. Again, as part of our budget process, we bring this to the board on an annual basis for reapproval, just so that, you know, we're consistent, we can keep working on these. Again, I would need an emotion today just to reapprove the project list for me today. And at the next meeting, I expect that Kevin will be ready to come to the board releasing RFPs on those two projects for the highway shop.
Okay. Questions for Steve?
So the list, Ms. Chairman, was created in 2022. It just stays this way? Or do we at some point have conversations about moving things, adding things, deleting things?
Well, the board can certainly offer suggestions for amendments anytime. That's not a problem. It is the county's list, and the board is in charge of that. I really work closely with Kevin and Ben on, you know, what it is that the counties need in order to maintain those, their structures. You know, the, if you're thinking about the HHW building, again, that was put on in 2019 as something that was being considered at that point, and it's just been kicked down the road every year because it hasn't, hadn't been fleshed out to the point that there was a strong enough plan to actually pull the trigger on getting that one started. But if, again, if the board wants to make changes to the list, then now would be the time.
Ms. Chairman, and I'm not prepared to do that now. It was a general question.
Oh, okay.
Mostly because obviously I wasn't here in 2022, so do we just, or 19, so do we just inherit this? Or do we, do we at some point have a more in-depth conversation of saying, well, have we thought about adding these two projects? And potentially, and yes, HHW, because Commissioner Notch said we're not asking for approval. Well, this is approval because it's on the list.
It's approval of that the project is something that the county has, has had people thinking about. Again, we want to be transparent with the public, that there are, these are the projects that we have been considering working on. You know, again, if we were using bond dollars for any of these in past years, and this is a year where we haven't, we're not talking about using many bond dollars for anything, we would have to come up with a new formal capital improvement plan and have the board approve that plan specifically. But since we're not talking about using any bond dollars, we're just talking about reapproving the project list. In terms of, you know, a time to talk about that, what's often happened in the past is when we're at the board's retreat, we often end up talking about, you know, strategic planning in terms of our facilities, and it's often been a discussion in different pods or groups at that point so that that discussion is held there as well.
Got it. Thank you.
And of course, all of these would have to come back to the board. I mean, it's really a planning document.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, Jeff, I was just going to say, for example, the road in front of, in front of us out here, we're not going to make any decisions on that road until we know what we're going to do with the Justice Center.
Correct.
So it's just.
Got it.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll go down to G, issues by Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Should we hear from Pete?
Motion to approve the project list would be in order if that's something the board would like to do.
Okay. We got a motion?
A second.
And a second. Okay, sorry, I missed that. Any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Thank you.
Was that a negative?
Well, it was an aye, four aye.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Bertram?
No.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Notch?
Aye.
Commissioner Persky?
Aye.
Pass this four to one.
And then, Ms. Chairman, Mike had some questions.
Oh, Mike?
The email you sent, underissued by commissioners, yes.
There.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, do we want to start? Go this way around. Do you want to go first, Mike?
I can. Certainly can. Thank you. One of them was the November 7th meeting is already scheduled, and I know that there's a one or perhaps two commissioners that have a conflict with that date. So I was considering moving that to November 14th if there's no major conflicts with board, with board members. And I can just put that on the next agenda like we always do to change it.
Comments on that? I'm good with that move.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Randy, I think you might like that move, too.
I just wouldn't have been here. Next year especially.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, there's probably more than one reason to modify that one. We need to look at the deer hunting schedule, what we schedule when I ran the statewide.
That just happens to be. Well, it is one day off the peak of the rut. The peak of the rut, I believe, is November 6th, though.
Well, when I ran the Community Action Association, which was statewide, our board never met during. We knew that was one of the things to stay away from.
All right, okay.
The Railroad Authority, of course, needs to adopt its budget for the year. We've typically done that in one of our September meetings, at our September meeting. So those of you that are on that board, I was, I think it'll be a, you know, half hour discussion.
It works unless we have a super-long board meeting.
Yeah. And then.
Maybe that meeting should be before our board meeting.
We could do that, too.
I was going to say, we often meet before.
We could, I mean, we could. We definitely could, yeah.
Yeah.
And then.
Good idea.
There's been some correspondence and conversations with the YMCA, and I'm just wondering if the board is at a position where they want them to come and make a presentation and make that request or not, or when.
That's a good question.
I think they, you know, this is certainly, I would, I'm not advocating this needs to be on our timeline, your timeline, but they would like to come on September 12th.
If I can ask, how many board members have been approached by them? I have.
Yeah, all of us have.
I'm supposed to be there at 1:00.
Okay.
I already let them know.
I think, Ms. Chairman, I think it would be appropriate to have them make a presentation. I'm surprised September 12th is early enough for them because they were leveraging a big donor, potentially, which way we went.
Commissioner Bertram, my last conversation with Greg, which was, I can't remember, a day or two ago, the 12th would work in concert with their, with an event they have upcoming.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
I think that's if we made a decision. I don't know if you're going to make a decision that day.
I think it would be appropriate for a presentation.
Okay.
I agree.
Comments? Just, okay, consensus is that, yeah, we'll go with that.
Okay, thank you. And I also asked about the RSVP, and that's in the budget, and we can let that play out if you want to hear some from them later weekend. That decision doesn't have to be made today, but it's whatever the board wishes.
Ms. Chairman, as long as you're talking about it, I guess, again, if we give money that like that, like we did this on the city council, we kind of have the group come before us because then they understand that there's some, at least, so I would say a 10, 15-minute overview wouldn't be bad because they understand that they're presenting to us and that we're giving them money, but that's my call.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Randy, before we move on, did you have anything?
No, I don't.
Just while, just, you know, we had another concern again about the hand counting of ballots, and I don't know how that question will ever be going away. Why it keeps coming back, just the information we know about the accuracy of machine counting and putting it in the hands of people, and even just the timing, what it would take to hand count the ballots across the county.
Well, and just to be clear, in a state election, we don't have a choice. We have to use a machine.
So.
And then at the next meeting or some future meeting, we do have election update prepared to go over the new laws, and we can address things like that, too, if you like.
All right, because the question just keeps coming back.
Yeah.
Perpetual. They got an issue, and they're not going to let go.
Yeah.
And then if we go to paper ballots, bitch about that, so.
Okay, you're on. Anything else?
I want to hear from Pete.
Pete, that's Ben. Pete's gone, but anyway, he's got, he's not on the agenda.
You know, what's it take for him to, you know?
Say something?
Yeah.
Cut the budget. I bet he'll be up here real fast.
Bring us up to date. I remain, I'm not making fun of the incident, but it's an unfortunate situation.
He was here in case there was questions on the CIP projects that relate to him.
Yeah. Okay, you have anything else?
Are you talking about?
I guess it doesn't matter.
Were you talking about the drowning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe just a minute.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Chair, commissioners, yeah, we did have, unfortunately, an unfortunate incident that occurred at Quarry Park this past weekend. It is the fourth drowning that has occurred at the park since the park opened in 1998, the second one within the last two years. Unfortunately, you know, it's an inherent risk of that Quarry Park, given the terrain when you're jumping in. Things, it hasn't been the practice of the county to have lifeguards at that. It is a swim at your risk, own risk. It is a, it's posted that way very well around all of the quarries and online and things like that. We are working currently with the sheriff's office and with our park staff to do a thorough review of our signage and operations and how we can be more efficient in getting emergency personnel into the park for situations like this and trying to make it more of a rescue and not a recovery-type situation. So that is the current status where we're at.
Thanks for that update. Appreciate that.
And also, the, that's the one of, how many of our parks offer swimming? I know that down by Clearwater, that park has swimming.
Correct. So Warner Lake is the other one where it has a designated swimming beach.
Yeah. How many, how many of our parks have swimming, then?
Just two, Quarry Park and Warner. But Quarry Park is its own animal in that. You can't walk into the, you have to jump in most of the quarries, so.
Okay.
All right, thanks, man. Appreciate the follow-up and the work on the sheriff's department, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else, Lee?
No.
Okay. Jeff?
Ms. Chairman, community function's pretty much wrapped up. Summer's heading south, unfortunately. Highway 23 is on schedule. I got an update yesterday. Both sections, which I'll share tomorrow at the Highway 23 coalition meeting, but everything's going well there, and they are on schedule to have their opening in September and November on the two different sections, so that's good news for everybody. And then the Stearns County History Museum Executive Director searched to date, have 17 applications, so that's good news. Certainly will have a pool to draw from, so that's all I've got.
Okay. Steve?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Daryl?
Actually, I'm good, too.
Okay, I just.
I choose to be good.
Okay, yeah, you know, we're late already again, 1:30 this afternoon. It's been a long meeting. Just the thing about, you know, schools are going to be open, just hope people are safe and, you know, doing the right thing on the roads and be aware of school buses and kids out on the road now. One other thing is, we had a number of four-to-one votes today, which.
Yeah, I think it's good.
And I think that just also demonstrates, you know, that we have different opinions, and that can be healthy.
Maybe we didn't need to. Mergen.
Well, that's another situation, Lee, but one thing, Mike, I want to ask. When you, just protocol, when we call, to call the question, can you just research that, the protocol?
Well, I don't need to research. When, call the question would be something that there should be a motion and a second to approve. One person cannot move, cannot close debate.
Yeah, but then it's also my understanding that also the vote has to be taken on it, but the vote also has to be a supermajority. It can't be just a simple majority. Could you just, that's true?
I would have to look at that. I think it's a simple majority, but I would have to look.
Let's find out.
Yeah, and Joe and I were talking briefly, Mr. Chair, you and I were talking briefly at the break. It might be useful for, the other thing with Robert's rules, because I just went to another training at NACO this summer, is that we can set up our own practices. So if we want to make sure that, we do a number of things right now, including what happened today, by practice. So that means right now that is our practice, but we could decide, and maybe we should decide, whether at our retreat or another time, really how we're going to do this so that we're good and consistent, and everybody knows.
It is probably the most misused motion or use of Robert's rules is calling the question, and there's a number of bodies that, and they just stop debate. And that's really not, in my experience, what should happen when someone says call the question. It should actually be a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
And then also, just like a motion to adjourn, we don't use a motion to adjourn, but some bodies do.
We don't have to, but yes, we could just talk about those things.
And same thing on closing the public hearing, Jeff. We do that in Planning Commission. We ask for a motion, but here we don't. Just some of the practices.
Yeah, which I think is fine. You can just close the hearing, but.
And the idea behind Robert's rule is to give some type of order to meetings, but they're not necessarily mandated. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. meeting.